Mr. Lopez, you ready? Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome out to our regular meeting of September 6th, I mean, September 9th, excuse me. For the record, it is 1:09. If you'll call roll, please.
Mayor Barone?
Present.
Councilmember Hahn?
Here.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Here.
Councilmember Cantú?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Your honor, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll remain standing for a brief moment, just a moment of silence for those in our community that continue to suffer and that their families will become whole and that we have unity within our community. Counsel, we have approval of the agenda. Mr. Bellis, did we have something on approval of the agenda?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Under Town Manager's report, Councilman Hahn was going on 11A, Councilman Hahn was going to give a report in regards to the public informational meeting we had on the airport. I would ask that that be moved up to 10D. So that that's heard prior to the two airport matters. I would also ask that 10E, if it's the wish of the council, that we insert an executive session under the exemption on the Public Meetings Act for pending litigation, as it's our understanding that there has been a lawsuit filed in regards to asking for a restraining order from the town and county proceeding in regards to what are currently listed as matters D and E. And I would advise that we discuss the matter with counsel prior to publicly acting on D and E.
Which would then be F and G, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Counsel?
Move for approval as recommended by the manager, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We have a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantú?
Okay. So we'll go approval of the minutes, A, August 5th, 2014, special meeting minutes, counsel?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, call for the vote.
Councilmember Cantú?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantú?
Yes.
So, August 12th, 2014, regular meeting minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve August 12th meeting minutes and if we could lump August 18th in them as well.
Well, don't change that. It's August 12th.
August 12th?
So then we'll just all approve item B.
So the August 12th or?
August 12th.
12th, so that's the one we're doing right now?
Yeah.
So there is?
There is a change.
Okay.
12th?
There.
Okay. Renee, it's line 45. What page? It's August 12th. Recognition of Mystic Downs. It says Councilmember Gonzalez stated, and it should be my name instead. Okay. I'll take care of that. Thank you.
So, counselor, would you, on your motion to approve, would you?
Accept.
Accept the change?
Yes, sir.
And so we, you have a motion with the acceptance of changes, do we have a second to that?
No second.
And a second. Any further discussion? None, call for the vote.
Councilmember Cantú?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Yes.
So we'll go to item C, August 18th, 2014, special meeting minutes, counsel?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
No second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? None, call for the vote.
Councilmember Cantú?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
So we'll go to item C, August 18th, 2014, special meeting minutes, counsel?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
No second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? None, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantú?
Yes.
So, thank you. So we'll go on to awards and recognitions, and it's my honor to be able to recognize one of our own. When they go above and beyond, it's great to see. I'd like to recognize Francella Garcia. And Francella, if you'd like to stand up, please. You know, on behalf, on behalf of the mayor and counsel, we'd like to congratulate you, Francella, our deputy county clerk, in achieving the prestigious designation of certified municipal clerk through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. This designation will only be achieved by completing demanding educational requirements, and we thank you for your time, your determination, and your dedication, not only to your profession, but also to the town of Taos. We take immense pride in your accomplishments, and we thank you for contributing to excellence in government. So again, thank you for going beyond, and thank you for getting this done. So, thank you, and we'd like to present this to you. Thank you, Francella.
Francella, thank you. Appreciate you. Congratulations. Good job, Francella.
Francella, if you'd like to say something, we'd... I don't want to put you on the spot, but I think you did a lot of work, and I think it's, you know, it's great to see that our employees go above and beyond and get the education that is offered.
Thank you, Mayor. I feel honored that I'm given recognition, and I look forward in working more with this new administration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
So, counsel, we'll go item B, appointment of the town attorney, appointment of, so appoint Floyd M. Lopez to the position of town attorney pursuant to Title III, Chapter 3.64.080 of the Town of Taos Municipal Code. And do we need to ratify this appointment? I believe, do we have a motion to that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantú?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez, if you'd step forward, I think we have the judge gonna take care of you. Of yours.
Give him the gavel.
Raise your right hand. Okay. I Floyd W. Lopez.
I Floyd W. Lopez.
Having been appointed to the office of town attorney.
Having been appointed to the office of town attorney.
For the town of Taos.
For the town of Taos.
On September 2nd, 2014.
On September 2nd, 2014.
In the county of Taos.
The county of Taos.
State of New Mexico.
State of New Mexico.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of New Mexico.
The Constitution and laws of the state of New Mexico.
The Town of Taos Municipal Code.
The Town of Taos Municipal Code.
And faithfully and impartially discharge.
Faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Sign right here, Mr. Lopez. I could say you're a doctor and not a lawyer. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lopez. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, and we have a plaque for him in Town of Taos, appointed officer to all whom these present may come greeting know ye that the mayor of Town of Taos, New Mexico, by virtue of the authority vested in that office by the laws of the Town of Taos, reposing special trust and confidence in Mr. Floyd M., Floyd W. Lopez, do hereby constitute and appoint him as town attorney. So, Mr. Lopez?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Lopez.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, thank you very much, so very much, all of you. I promise you that I will do the very best that I can, both to serve you and the members of the Taos community, and I'm very grateful. Thank you very much. Mr. Lopez? Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, while we're on awards and recognitions, I'd like to point out that the Employee Recognition Committee that you had formed has named its first employee of the month, which is Judy Esquivel. And unfortunately, Judy is not here, she's home and recovering, but when she's back next month, we'll have her come forward.
Thank you, Rick.
She was chosen unanimously by all of those.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll get to recognize her hopefully at our next meeting, so, thanks. So go on to presentations, Resolution 1444, supporting Kit Carson Electric, Councilman Gonzalez?
Sir?
This is the resolution to support, Mr. Mayor, for Kit Carson Electric with regards to continued mediation with Tri-State. And at this time, I'd like to call Luis Reyes, Kit Carson Electric CEO, up to give us his report on mediation.
Mr. Reyes, welcome. Board member, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager, members of the public, thank you very much for giving us this time to update you on our current activities at the co-op, and really especially two important activities. Today with me, I have a board member from the Peñasque area, Ambros Mascarillas. He has served on the board probably since 87.
Yes.
So whatever many years that is, it's a long time. So, so today what I want to go over with the, with the council is the, I guess, the Tri-State Kit Carson experience, history, and opportunities. I think the first, if we can go to the first slide, or next slide, is a little bit about the merger. Tri-State merged with Plains in 2000, there was 13 co-ops that were served by Plains. Now Apache was in Arizona. They were the only non-Pleins co-op that went with Tri-State. And during that merger, we ended up with a contract that expires with Tri-State in 2040. The benefits of the merger were to be lower rates and rate stability. During the Plains years, a series of increases, not sure if we had enough power supply to support the growing needs of the members in rural areas. Regulatory oversight, we wanted to make sure that there was a safety net for members of the co-op in the event that rates got out of hand or service requirements. And more access to renewable energy. As many of you know, or all of you know, this community is blessed with about 300, 300-plus days of sun, and should be the solar capital of the world. At the time, under Plains, there was very little activity by Kit Carson or Plains when it came to renewable energy, if any. Any renewable energy was done on the consumer side of the meter or home installations. And our board thought that that, with a relationship with Tri-State, that would change. What happened is since the merger, we've had nine rate increases, and two proposed rate increases that have been stopped. The primary reason is there is a law in the state of New Mexico that any time that Tri-State proposes a rate increase, at minimum, three co-ops in New Mexico have to file a protest. That needs to be then reviewed by the PRC. For the first nine, or seven protests, there was only one co-op in the state that protested, and that was Kit Carson Electric. It wasn't until 2013 that we got three co-ops, and then in 2014, when they tried to reinstitute the rate that was protested, plus a modest increase, did we get four. So it's actually taken us about 13 years to get three co-ops to protest. Thus, the increase on rates have basically doubled. I think the other issue that's important for the council and the public to know is 70% of your bill comes from Tri-State. We, the co-op itself, really has very little to operate. After you pay your debt service to, for plant expansions, employees and maintenance, we have very little, we have about a nickel per dollar to operate on. Lion's share of our money that we collect from our members goes to Denver. And I think that's why this issue is very important to talk about, and I think the information to the public that we do do a good job in controlling costs that we can control. The only way we can control the power cost is through a regulatory environment. There still is a 5% cap. In 2000, we went from 0 to 5% over a series of years, and petitions from the board of Kit Carson. We've asked for that cap to be increased, it has not, it's not been increased. And so it still stays at 5%. We're currently on a parallel course in negotiation with Tri-State to increase that. And I also do think, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, that this is a good issue for us to discuss amongst the public. You know, how much renewable do we want, and where do we want it, and will it fit in this, in this, going forward in this energy question? From the groups we've talked to, it generally is overwhelming yes, but we need to make sure, because we do cover three counties, six municipalities, and two tribes, that there is a majority interest in pursuing more renewable energy, as our board has, basically, we're right up against the 5%. We're not there, but any major project puts us above the 5%. And so I think that's one thing that, the opportunity this negotiations gives us is the ability to talk about our energy future in the Taos, Rio Reba, and Colfax area. Currently, Tri-State is also challenging the regulatory oversight in federal court. When the merger was done, there was an agreement, a written agreement by Tri-State to the members, the 12 members and the state of New Mexico, that if you approve the merger, we would subject ourselves to regulation when three co-ops protested. Once we got the three protests, Tri-State went to federal court to say that that agreement violates the Constitution of the United States. And so we feel that there is a breach of contract. However, we think this is a better opportunity to get out of the contract than, in essence, paying a whole lot of lawyers to go to court, but there becomes then a trust issue. For the first 12 years, when there was only one co-op protested, there was not a federal court issue. Once you got three, and it triggered the law in New Mexico, Tri-State now has us in federal court, meaning unconstitutional, really with the idea of not having any regulation at all. And if they don't have any regulation at all, then we have to count on the board of Tri-State, which is made of 44 members through four states, New Mexico, Colorado, Nebraska, and Wyoming, to determine what our rate levels are, what our infrastructure requirements will be, and what our renewable caps will be. And we just think that's unacceptable in today's environment. Our current status is currently the rates are suspended. And the suspension of the rates, and it's covered later in the presentation, that it has saved Kit Carson's members about 2.4 million for the 18-month period, which means your rates have been lowered by, or have not raised by that amount. From a statewide perspective, it's close to 24 million that these protests have saved ratepayers of New Mexico. On the flip side, Tri-State still had a record year, or will have a record, they had a record year in 2013 of $90 million in margins, and they're on track to hit that again for 2014. Tri-State needs about 62 to 65 million to meet their financial requirements. And so we've said, if you need the 62 or 65 to meet it, you're entitled to that, because we want to make sure they invest in our infrastructure. But anything above that should be returned back to the members. And so even with the loss of revenue from New Mexico, they still have had record years when it comes to profit. And again, we just think that's unacceptable, and I'm hoping that this parallel course of having a rate case plus mediation will give the rate, the cost-based rates to our And the mediation really is going to try to reach a global summit, and here are the issues we want to cover. But the first thing is, to get to that point, the 12 co-ops in Tri-State have agreed to a rate, what we call a rate rider, but an increase of .00226 cents per kilowatt hour, not to exceed 7 million for the state. The impact to Kit Carson members, for an average residential uses about 500 kilowatt hours, that'd be about $1.10 a month. For a small commercial, about $30. For larger commercials, really depending on their, on their electric characteristics. But, but we feel that this is worth the option of maybe finding another power supplier with a, with better terms and conditions, lifting the renewable cap, in fact, maybe eliminating it depending on what power supplier, and then get a good dialogue of what our future power supply issues with the public is. This will only be in effect until December 31st of 2015, which means that if, at the end of next year, we have not come to a resolution, the rate rider goes away, we go back to the lower rates, and then we continue the current two rate cases that are on the books. So what we do is we buy time with a modest increase. Now, Tri-State to date, because of the protests, as I mentioned earlier, about $24 million, they basically have lost. It is Kit Carson's position that there will be no retroactivity, so if there's some agreement made, we're not going to go back and ask ratepayers for any monies. Tri-State does want retroactivity. And so the federal case becomes very important, because if there's no regulatory oversight and no regulatory body to tell them to slow down, their board can decide what they can recover going backwards. And this is statewide, and so as, if our energy decline, energy usage declines, the increase is smaller, if it increases, your increase is larger. But overall, the trade-off of 7 million to the state for 30 million that they want, we think is in our best interest to move forward, and hopefully, and our board, Mr. Mayor, has voted unanimously to try to opt out of the contract. So it's not to say that if Tri-State doesn't come back with a revised or restructured contract that meets the members' needs, that we won't entertain it, but I think our first option is to see if we can get a better power supply option from a third party, and not rely on, fully on Tri-State's power. So for that 7 million dollars, or, and Kit Carson's about 10% of that, so when we look at our system, of that 7 million statewide, it's 700,000 that will be based on historical that Kit Carson members over time would have to come up with. We want to review and restructure the current power supply contract, including the opt-out option, and obtain authorization to negotiate with other power suppliers, including Tri-State. Many of you, if you've followed kind of the energy municipalities, maybe I was talking to municipal league, the city of Gallup in May, got power from Tri-State through another co-op for 3.4 cents for next year. We're paying 7.3, and we're a member, and a non-member is paying 3.4 cents. What Gallup will pay at the end of their eight-year contract is less than we'll pay today. And we believe the primary reason that that's occurred is because there's an excess of power in the region. And when there's an excess of power that's being dumped into the region, they need to basically just sell it, they sell it at a cost. We think the opportunity for Kit Carson and its members to enjoy lower rates may be here. Put things in perspective, based on our power, our kilowatt hour usage, if we lower our power costs one penny, that's worth 3.3 million dollars to the community on an annual basis. So for every penny we save, we, the consumers, keep 3.3 million dollars in their pocket. And so those, we're talking big dollars over a 10-year contract or 15-year contract, depending on what we finally end up with. So that will be the first step. The second part of our agreement is, within 90 days of when this is approved by the PRC, that they will give us a good-faith proposal to pay out their capital credits. Currently, Tri-State owes Kit Carson 11 million dollars in capital credits. And we feel that we can use that capital better by receiving that and then giving that back to its ratepayers. And so that is, we want to see what kind of proposal they're going to give on the capital they have with us. An independent cost-of-service study will be done. This is important, because in the current way Tri-State does rates is budget-based, and it's not independent, it's done with their staff internally, with no oversight except for their board. And so if you miss your budget, and it's high, let's say you just miss, and the cost is higher than, or lower than you projected, today, there's no mechanism to get that, those funds back, those rates back to the members. And so they, in essence, over-collect. An independent cost-of-service consultant will come in that really, in essence, doesn't have a dog in the fight, is going to look at the accounts, the records of the co-op, look at what a rate return for a co-op should be, and then say, this is the rate that you should be offering to your members. And that way, that takes the politics out of the science part of this. Then the second part would be called a rate design, which then assigns cost to each class of customers. And in the utility world, this is very, very important, because this is cost-based rates. Members should pay what it costs to serve you, not any more than that. Other things that Tri-State wants to talk about, they want to talk about jurisdiction. They do want the three protest rule that's on the books for the state of Mexico to be repealed by the legislature of New Mexico. We think that's going to be very, very difficult, as today, that's really the only protection Kit Carson and the other 11 co-ops have when it comes to rate increases. Now that becomes a moot point if the federal case determines that, in fact, that law does interfere in interstate commerce. Then the real issue is, did Tri-State lie or breach their contract in 2000, when they entered into agreement, they had no intent of following? And I think there is, so there's another avenue, but maybe more costly avenue, to get out of our contract. But that is going to be key to what Tri-State wants. When you have a, when they just, they just passed their budget. Tri-State's budget was 1.3 billion dollars. So Mayor, if you put that into context of the Town of Taos or Kit Carson, Tri-State is a very, very large company. It's a co-op, but it's a very large company. And so 7 million dollars is really not what they're after. What they're after is no jurisdiction over their wholesale rates. That is the fundamental reason they have decided to negotiate with the co-ops. We also want, again, as I mentioned, Tri-State will have to come to the table now and tell us why the 5% cap needs to be there. In our research, both with our lenders, with our, with the federal government tied to the contract, there is no, nothing written- But that is going to be key to what Tri-State wants. When you have a, when they just passed their budget, Tri-State's budget was $1.3 billion. So Mayor, if you put that into context of the townhouse or Kit Carson, Tri-State is a very, very large company. It's a co-op, but it's a very large company. And so $7 million is really not what they're after. What they're after is no jurisdiction over their wholesale rates. That is the fundamental reason they have decided to negotiate with the co-ops. We also want, again, as I mentioned, Tri-State will have to come to the table now and tell us why the 5% cap needs to be there. In our research, both with our lenders, with the federal government tied to the contract, there is no, nothing written that says this is a cap. Really what limits the amount of renewable energy from a technical standpoint is what it does to your electric grid and then what it takes to fix it. And that becomes a local decision. But from a federal standpoint, there is no mandate that 5, 10, 15, any of those numbers cause financial problems for Tri-State. And so this gives us an opportunity that if, for some reason, they feel that 5% needs to be the cap, they need to let us know. Otherwise, in this process, the PRC is still kind of the referee. If we feel there's bad faith bargaining, lack of information, all these, this process terminates and we go back to a rate case. So we still have the safety net that at the end of the day, we can't come to an agreement, we still have a rate case in which, again, Kit Carson feels very confident that we can hold off another rate increase. But that doesn't solve the entire global issues tied to contract and renewable energy that we want to discuss. Covered that. The other thing that may come out of this is a shorter-term contract. The co-op has been criticized for a 40-year contract. The reality is in the power business, when you build coal and natural gas plants, they last for 50 years. And when you go to a bank to borrow money, they want contracts that secure that facility. So from a financial standpoint, that's probably sound business from the banking standpoint. I think what we're trying to address, though, is technology and energy uses are changing. And maybe the way, maybe the way to, I guess the ways of a 40-year coal plant, in our opinion, are dying. That those type of plants are going to be tougher to build and tougher to finance. And so the reality is, as you get into different technology, smaller plants, more localized generation, you don't need long-term contracts to finance those type of plants. And so we really want to look at a shorter term. The term that we've thrown around in the boardroom have been 10 to 15 years. That seems to be in the realm of which power suppliers would come to the table to give us a fair price of power. Number five, we also want price certainty. The way it works today is, we don't know until October what the price for next year is going to be. We like to establish a contract, and let's take 10 years as a talking point, that we would know what the price of power is going to be each of those years. So if there is an increase, the co-op can announce that to its members, that this is going to be our rates for the next 10 years. You know, we can debate that, we can discuss it, but at least there's some certainty that we can budget around. Now, we don't. Under the merger agreement, the rates in 2010 were supposed to be 4.5 cents. We started at 3.6, and they're only supposed to go to 4.5. We're almost at 7.5. So there's no certainty even in our budgeting. The other reality is, energy conservation programs, renewable energy is eroding the number of kilowatt-hours Kit Carson sells, as well as other utilities. So we have to devise programs and cost structures that capture our fixed cost. Because the transformer still costs what it costs. We're still depreciating it, depreciating it as interest, but we're using less of it. And that's just a reality. So we have to really rethink of how we deliver electricity into the grid. And that's just not unique to us. But I think the difference is, we do have a very active community that wants to discuss these issues, and the board wants to engage them in that discussion. Again, currently, we have the two current rates pending, so those will, at the end of the day, if we don't negotiate a deal, those will come back to the table. And the rate rider will cover 7 million. To date, and this is one month dated, we saved 1.4 million, Kit Carson, in 2013, and 691 as of June. As of July, just add another 300,000 to that, and that's a savings to our members. B, the numbers that the state of New Mexico, the 12 distribution co-ops have saved. Again, we do want, and I think this is important because there will be a modest increase, and we don't want to by any means mislead any of our members that there's going to be a modest increase to try to attempt a global settlement. But we think the increase at about a dollar, above a dollar, is within most people's budgets and will hopefully get the result we want when it comes to power supply. I think the other thing about that that is important, it's, there's a drop dead date. By December 31st of 2015, it goes away. I'll go over, there's other triggers that, for some reason, things don't happen like we think, this deal, the rate increase goes away. And again, the amount is .00226, so, you know, you guys, people in the audience can just take their kilowatt-hours, multiply by that, and that's their increase. That's two and thousandths of a penny. So there's ways to terminate this agreement. If three members provide notice to Tri-State that the negotiations are no longer productive, it ends. So once the commission approves this, then it's up to, if three co-ops just write Tri-State and say, "We're not satisfied with X, Y, and Z," it ends, and we're back in a rate case. The rate rider stops. If fewer than three members, let's say two members, let's say just Kit Carson, we think the exit fee is too high or not good in good faith, the exit fee to get out. And the mediator agrees with us, then the deal is terminated, we go to a rate case. And the increase, the rate rider goes away. If Tri-State fails to provide by December 31st a proposal on capital credits, the deal terminates and we're back to where we're today. If Tri-State fails to provide a good-faith proposal on the exit methodology, what will it take for a co-op like Kit Carson to exit by December 31st of this year? The agreement terminates and we're back into the rate case. So we do believe we have safeguards to protect our members in the event that there is not good-faith bargaining on Tri-State's behalf. Up there, just kind of an average of what I said, residential, about $1.10. Seasonal, 47 cents a month. Small commercial, 2.72, and then large commercial, 49. And that really is subject to the type of business. So, you know, if it's a school, it's going to be more, but if it's a large commercial like a water well the town has, it's going to be less. And so these are just averages based on historical usages that the co-op has. That's what we feel our impact on the rider would be, based on historical, 730,000 if the rider was applied to last year's kilowatt-hours, and 348,000 if it was applied to this year's kilowatt-hours. And these are hard to see, and again, all this information is also available on Kit Carson's website, so anyone who wants to download this information. We did do a, for the town, I think I have it here. So Town Hall, the impact is $482.19 for a year, based on historical. That'd be the cost to the town for this proposal. The other thing that I think are important, that we're trying to also address in this, Mr. Mayor, is, and we have to address the loss of Chevron. So this is a good time, timely time, to look at our power costs, our power structure, because Chevron's 10% of our load. There's other, you know, Chevron, some of that will be replaced by reclamation, and we're negotiating with Chevron exactly what that's going to be, what the rate structure's going to be, but there will be a loss. There's the immediate impact that we felt by 300 employees just not having work. And so they had their, they got paid until August 2nd. This is kind of the first full month they have, had no paycheck unless they got another job. So that starts to impact the money we can collect and people's ability to pay. So we're looking at that. We're also looking at the impact of the growth in Taoski Valley, and really how real or perceived that is. Because there's big plans up there, but again, electrically, we can gauge a lot of things that are happening. And so that may be something that offsets, but we don't want to count on it because it's seasonal. You know, they generally operate four or five years, months out of the year, and it's real snow-dependent. And if the weather has, the past winters reflect what we're going to see, you don't want, you project them, but you don't want to put too much into that, because if we miss it, then we're just back asking the rest of the members for increases. So we're looking at all these issues in a global sense to make sure that the electric rates are affordable, that we can do what we think be part of an economic development package. When it comes, when we talk to businesses, they want to know what the cost of doing business in Taosis. And electricity is becoming a bigger and bigger factor. You know, whether you get it from us or get it from a solar array, it's still, energy is a big factor in the way people do business and how they live. The other thing that we've seen, Mr. Mayor, is that technology is changing usage patterns. And you speak desktops to laptops to iPads. So you get more computing power, but you get less energy use. But we have this infrastructure we have to still maintain. And so this gives us an opportunity to talk about all these, get the information out. So with that, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would stand for any questions or comments you may have.
Counselor, Counselor Benzel.
Mr. Mayor, one key aspect that I think Luis touched on that's huge for us as we move forward, Mr. Bellis, especially with regards to looking for our Economic Development Director, is that very sentiment that most large companies share across the board, which is, from an economic development aspect for small municipalities, I think the number-one aspect that's looked at is what utility cost is within the region. So, you know, looking at the settlement and just hearing out the entire way this is going to play out, it doesn't sit well with me on a constituency base to not have any jurisdiction over the wholesale of rates. Because what that means to us is that we could have a rate increase every year and have no accountability track as to why that's really happening. So I think it's extremely important, Mr. Mayor, that we seriously take a look at it, stand behind the co-op with regards to this rate case, or at least the ability to attempt to mediate, because it impacts us all on a much larger scale than I think is perceived. And Luis is absolutely right with regards to the mine layoffs. You know, until you get down to a microscopic level and really see that people now can't even pay power bills, or they're choosing between paying power bills and putting food on the table, we're about to face some real crisis. And for us, that all trickles down into what it does to our bottom line and grocery receipts as well. So I think it's extremely important that we stand behind the co-op with regards to this resolution. And, Mr. Mayor, I yield to my fellow counselors as well, too, if they have any questions or comments.
Counselor Peralta.
Thank you, Mayor. Luis, just a couple of questions. One is, right now, what happens to the excess revenues generated by Tri-State since it's a co-op?
So what happens to the excess, they go into these capital credit accounts, which Kit Carson is a benefactor. But in reality, the 32 co-ops of the other three states get payments every year. And co-ops from New Mexico, based on their formula, probably won't get a payment till about 2035 to 2040. So we have this IOU out there that we probably will never be able to use, because we think fundamentally the electric industry is going to change anyway. And so we're trying to accelerate those payments.
So the contracts they have with other states' co-ops are different from New Mexico's contracts?
They're, no, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, they're the same, except the agreement was, when we got in, when the merger occurred, $400 million was owed to the 32. And so we're on a first-in, first-out basis, so the first co-op's in get the first capital credits. So they have to pay those 400 out first before they even get to us. They pay about $10 million a year. So if you just take easy math, you know, 400 divided by 10, in 40 years, we get a payment. Now, if they accelerate that to 20 million, that's 20 years we get it, but to generate cash, they have to raise their rates. So we have to be careful of what we ask for. So we're just saying, why don't you change your methodology to give a portion to the 32, but then carve out a portion to the 12, so we get some immediate relief for our members brought away? And everybody wins. The 32 get theirs, the 12 get ours, because you're paying into that right now. You know, you're, any excess that you pay, it's banked, but you don't get the benefit unless you're around in 2035.
So the $11 million, I think that I heard you say, that are capital credits that are due Kit Carson ratepayers? That money is, in fact, real, or is it book?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, well, currently, it's book. I mean, they have enough cash, but they're only obligated to pay it out, let's say, in dissolution. So from a practical, we book it as revenue, but it's, the reality is, we won't get that money unless they have the cash in the year they pay it. So if they don't have that cash in 2035, then we don't get the money.
So where I'm coming from on this is that you indicated there was like a difference of about $30 million a year, or is it 20 or something like that, in excess cash over what it costs them to run the co-op?
It's about 25 to 30 million a year.
Okay. And you're saying that they spend 10 million of that to pay off the first-in, first-out. What happens to the other 20 million?
Generally, what they do is they defer it. And under RUS rules, you can defer five years, so what they do is they defer it so that if any contingencies come up in the future years, then they have a deferred fund that they can use that money, whether it's to temper a rate increase. So they may defer, let's say they lack 20 million to have zero, if they have a capital project that comes up that wasn't budgeted. So they defer it. They currently had about $50 million deferred as of the end of 2013. Not sure what they're going to use, if any, for 2014, or for 2015 budget.
The other question I have, thank you. The other question I had was, New Mexico's Governor Richardson required, passed a law that required electrical generation by sustainable sources in a percentage for co-ops, I think, or not for co-ops, but for electric companies, to 15 or 20% by 2020 or something like that. Is there anything on the federal books similar to that, that should trump the Tri-State contract?
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Peralta, the first is, in the state of New Mexico, co-ops have a 5% requirement by 2015, 10% by 2020. Investor-owned is double it, 10% by 2015, 20% by 2020. The flaw in the New Mexico law is, that generation doesn't have to reside in New Mexico or in your system. You can go out in the market and buy what is called RECs, renewable energy certificates. So if you recall, about six or seven years ago, Tri-State built a huge solar plant in Simran. That was really a compliance plant. That wasn't a plant we did because we thought it was the right thing to do. That's, so the way the law works is, if I don't have any renewable, I can go to Tri-State, they can satisfy my requirement by buying RECs from that plant. So that's how that law really works versus, investor-owned has, have a portion that resides in New Mexico, and a portion they can do a paper transaction. There's no federal law for renewable energy caps. It's always been defeated, or the legislation that we have reviewed exempted co-ops. So right now, the only thing we have is what's on the books in the state of New Mexico.
And that doesn't really tie it to generating in New Mexico, or allow you to generate it, I mean, through yourselves or through your members?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, you know, and again, this is Kit Carson's position, not necessarily the other co-ops, but when you talk about economic development globally, that could be, that could be a niche, because if the law actually mandated that you built the facility that you're getting credit for in your locale, and that's the only way you could get a credit, you can't get it from across state borders, then I think that would be a real renewable energy policy. It's not like that. I can actually call Tri-State today, say, "I need 5% of my energy, tell me what the bill is, I'll pay it." And then I write a letter. me what the bill is, I'll pay it. And then I write a letter to the state, saying I've satisfied, uh, the requirements. So, the law should be fixed, but I'm not sure if there's a will to fix it.
Are, are you speaking from the co-ops, or are you speaking from the legislature?
Uh, today, I would say from both, from both the, the co-ops and the, and the legislators themselves.
In other words, you don't really want your hands tied in order to meet that requirement. I mean, I'm speaking administratively rather than philosophically.
I, I think administratively, uh, the, the cap needs to be raised. There has to be, I think we have enough technical information today, uh, done by, uh, the national labs, that Kit Carson could probably, uh, take up to twenty percent of its energy locally from renewable energy. And in my opinion, is that's the path we should go. While we're doing that, we should also examine, if we go past twenty percent, what happens to our system? What will it cost to make sure it doesn't cause any problems, and then decide who pays for it? But I think we have to have that discussion, and not just have some artificial number that, that sounds good to utilities. I think the other thing that's changed from when the law was introduced in two thousand-ish to now, is the price of renewables has come down. And so, I could buy that argument when it was fifteen cents a kilowatt hour, uh, for solar. Uh, but today, we probably can get solar for nine cents, and if we're paying Tri-State eight cents, you know, that penny, then that becomes a local decision. Are we willing to pay a penny premium to have clean energy? If we are, let's build more. If we're not, then let's kinda temper our growth. But then, that becomes, what I've asked for is a discussion from the membership.
So, one last question from Mayor, uh, Luis. So, so the negotiation on the contract with Tri-State, either to dissolve the contract or adjust it in some way, would give you and the membership here more control over the possibility of getting into renewable energy, uh, in the future, depending upon what may happen politically or not?
Yes. I mean, two things could happen. Uh, we could raise a cap, where, where it gives us more latitude. You know, let's go from five to fifteen. Uh, let's go incrementally, five, ten, fifteen, as you hit targets. Uh, or you negotiate that there's no cap. And then it's, it's, uh, it's a, it's a function of system reliability and where you put it. So, it, it would give us a flexibility to really, I think, uh, Counselor Peralta, define, really, if we're gonna be the solar capital, because then we don't have any impediments other than technology and price. And then, I think with the members of the community, we could figure out a solution.
Thank you.
Counselor Hahn?
Mr. Reyes, thank you. Um, I wanna commend you and the co-op for the collaborative effort with renewable Taos. Um, you had mentioned that there are other suppliers out there in competition with Tri-State. Who are they?
Uh, Mayor, Councilman Hahn, most of them would be whoever comes in Four Corners, who has interest at Four Corners. So, probably, uh, Public Service in New Mexico, Tucson Electric, uh, Arizona Public Service. Uh, we're compiling the list, but there's probably about half a dozen, uh, that, uh, go to Four Corners. Uh, that's probably the most cost-effective, 'cause they're, they're what we call one step away from us. In reality, Kit Carson is served by a network system, which means we probably get most of our power from Four Corners anyway. Even though we own a plant and, and prue it in, in grants, uh, through Tri-State, the way electrons flow, we probably get it from Four Corners.
Thank, thank you. Uh, the other question I had was that you wanted to negotiate with Tri-State as far as recouping, or rather, Tri-State's contention that they wanted to recoup what I'm gonna call pass two, and you're gonna, uh, counter that. What kind of leverage do you have that way?
Uh, Mayor, Councilman Hahn, I think the, the first leverage is that's a, that's never been done in New Mexico. The, the, uh, can't say there's a law having gone that far, but the precedent from the PRC with utilities is they don't allow retroactive ratemaking. Basically, when a utility goes in for a rate increase, they have the burden to prove their case, and they take the risk if they prove it or not. And if, if, if they don't prove it, they're not entitled to get what we feel is, is back payment. So, we feel strong there just on the precedent. I think that's one reason getting local support is important, because at the end of the day, uh, commissioners are gonna listen to the co-ops, but they're gonna listen to you guys. And, 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 uh, to be honest, and we've had this discussion with our board, there's no way our board is gonna go back to three hundred unemployed miners and say, by the way, you lost your job, but you still owe me all this past, past money. That, that just isn't, uh, being a good person, much less business or any of this other stuff. So, I think precedent is, is, is on our side. Uh, I think realistically, uh, if you've had members who have gone, and you have new members, you know, who, who pays for that? Because the member like Chevron, they're not gonna be around. So, if they're ten percent of our load, I'd have to find ten percent of this retroactivity for somebody else. And so, that's not fair to burn residential ratepayers with the loss of, uh, Chevron for retroactivity. So, there's some, so, there's some common sense and business, uh, positions we would take that we think we would prevail.
And did I hear you say, Luis, uh, am I correct in stating that interstate commerce laws do not regulate electrical, not, not charges, but, uh, you know, if it, if this falls out of mediation and we reach an impasse, uh, or in fact end up in interstate commerce realm, do we have any recourse that way?
Well, not, not being alarm and trying to make this simple, uh, so interstate commerce is basically if you serve in more than one state.
Right.
One state can't really handicap you in how you do business in other states or that state. And since they serve in four states, they're saying that they're under the interstate commerce clause. Uh, our position is, since you're a monopoly, uh, in, in essence, Kit Carson can't buy power from anybody else. Then you have to, being a monopoly, you have to have some regulatory oversight over you. You choose. You can either choose a federal level, which is FERC, or the state level, but you can't go without regulation. So, we've in essence told Tri-State, you know, kinda pick your poison. If you want the feds to regu- that's fine. That'd be more costly for the co-op, because at that point, you'd have to get DC attorneys, everything's in DC. But there'd be a mechanism in which, uh, we could challenge the rates. And so, that's the basis of our argument. I think, I think, uh, Councilman Hahn, in, in, the main, the, the main thrust of this is, when we did the merger and Kit Carson, its member, paid, uh, seven point two million dollars in cash, but we gave up about ten million dollars in capital credits, it was for the agreement that when three co-ops protested, they would abide by the laws of the state. So, at that point, and, and the constitution hasn't changed. So, in two thousand, it, the same interstate issue is still here as two thousand fourteen. We just want to hon- for them to honor their agreement. Uh, just like when, when, when Kit Carson goes for a rate case, uh, we, you know, uh, if we don't get what we want, we just have to come back to the memberships and convince them, this is why we need it. I, I think they have the same obligation. And, and, uh, by them not honoring that, uh, really has taxed whether we should do business with a company you can't trust.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Oh, go ahead.
No, no.
Counselor Peralta.
This has nothing to do with what we're talking about. No, I'll just ask him a question after we're all done.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Reyes, I was just curious, how long have you been the chief executive director? Officer?
Officer, uh, about twenty-two years.
And I just wanna applaud you for that. I, you know, that's one of the constants that has been in our community for twenty-two years. And wanna thank the board, uh, for continuing to look for those options to keep our utility bills down, and to foster that, uh, alternative, more alternative power in our community. You know, hopefully, one day, we can say we're gonna, we are the solar capital of the world. Uh, and I, I'm glad that, you know, the board and yourself are continuing to bring those options to us. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Peralta.
Uh, Counselor Kuntu, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say thank you, Luis. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Uh, thank you for that thorough explanation. I was always wondering why we were held in this, uh, part of your contract, and you explained that. Very nice. You can't hear that far?
You might get closer to it.
And, uh, oh, okay. Um, anyway, I've, I've heard you over the years at your annual meeting, explain things, uh, and you're very, very thorough in, in, in your explanations. And I hope we can get the five percent cap removed, and, and we can go a different direction as you're speaking about, uh, so that Taos can have renewable energy. And, and I'm really glad that, you know, Ta- renewable Taos and you are, are in collaboration and working together. And so, I just wish you well on that.
Thank you.
Counselor Peralta.
Uh, Luis, on another subject.
Okay.
Broadband.
Yes.
Uh, you just noticed coming over to the council meeting this afternoon that it seems like they're tying, uh, the network in, at least within that one-mile area of, of, of your headquarters. Is, is that what they're doing? Looks like that they're finally splicing things together. And what does that look like as far as, uh, expectation from the public for being able to connect?
So, so on our broadband, we've already, uh, connect, we already have people connected to our fiber network in the, uh, Amalia Costia area, working in Sunshine. Uh, you're right, we're making the final, uh, splices in the Taos area. I would say by the end of this week, I'll know what areas will be ready to be lit up. We already do have businesses like Sentinel, Randall's, uh, we, we, I think we've struck a deal with the county to get their, uh, uh, their, uh, their business. Uh, talking to the hotels, you know, Sage Press, Hampton. So, a lot, a lot of the network with the splicing is starting to now be lit. There's a tremendous amount of testing. Uh, you know, there's been a lot of discussions about the, uh, the, the county courthouse. We probably have the fastest speeds in the county, sitting right in there in the courthouse. I mean, so, uh, to show, uh, speeds, or show videos, or show maybe the, uh, what a fiber network can do, resides right in the plaza. And we've had that for about a year. I think, uh, Mr. Bellis saw the TV he wanted that, uh, we have.
[laughing]
Uh, but, but, uh, uh, you know, places like Angel Fire, probably right around Thanksgiving, Red River. Uh, so, uh, we'll probably know at the end of the, uh, end of the year, I, you know, as we do, have done this project, you know, this type of project has not been done anywhere in the country. And we're going to every home and business and building, basically building a brand-new network, telecom network, uh, in three counties, uh, with pretty tight budgets. I mean, it, it's taken the electric co-op seventy years to build to everybody. It's taken Central Inc. years to build, and they still don't have it to everybody. So, uh, this, this really has, uh, tested, uh, tested us. But the speeds we're having in Amalia, uh, councilmen, uh, rival those that you can get in Denver or Albuquerque, and for a fraction of the cost. Uh, I mean, we got a gentleman up there, he's a graphic designer, you know, twenty up, twenty down. Uh, that gas station as you're going out, you know, Costia, that went at the corner. If you've ever stopped there, they, they never have had gas, uh, pumps that you could put the credit card, 'cause there's not a connection up there for the credit card. Okay? Uh, she's getting connected today, and she's gonna get those pumps the, the third. And we talk about economic development, all that little stuff helps, 'cause now, uh, she can, she can close that whenever she closes, and people can stop and transact business. And so, uh, you know, those type of things are, and, and our priorities have, have, have changed. Uh, we're ready to light up Parrot's House, and then we had a request from the, uh, State of New Mexico to help with some of those crisis phones at the, at the gorge because of the, of the suicides. Uh, I'm not an expert if that helps or not, but I think people are looking at maybe the potentials of maybe that last call, maybe putting some videos so people can monitor that. And broadband is enabling our community to come up with maybe some solutions to stop some of these bad things that are happening in the community. And so, we had to, you know, we've had two, uh, gorge crossings. Uh, those are tough, you know, to cross twenty-two hundred feet with a piece of glass and make sure it doesn't break, and then test it. Uh, but I, what I'll do is I'll put out, uh, I'll get to you, uh, the schedules of the area, and we'll put it in map, and then we'll work with, uh, with Rick, so he can let other, uh, town people know when it's gonna be available in their area.
Thank you.
Anything else, Counselor Benjolz?
Um, so, Mr. Mayor, with that, I, I, uh, make a motion that we approve, uh, resolution, um, that we have before us. Um, just putting it, putting it out there also, uh, that we are not the only municipality, I believe, last week at the county, you, uh, and the commission approved Resolution two thousand fourteen dash forty. Also, uh, preliminary mediation agreement between Tri-State and its New Mexico, New Mexico member co-ops. Uh, so, Mr. Mayor, with that, I, uh, make a motion to approve, uh, the resolution.
Do we do have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll have a second. By Counselor Kuntu, any further discussion? None hearing none, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Luis.
[applause]
Mr. Mayor, I, I also wanna thank Mr. Reyes for, uh, being open to the idea of, uh, the town, the county, and, uh, the electric cooperative, and maybe some of our other key businesses working together on jointly paying for a regional economic development director. We've had a number of excellent applications from all over the state and the region, of people that are very interested in coming to work here. Unfortunately, that wasn't one of the positions we had open, um, so we're trying to work with our partners, and I appreciate his efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. So, so, again, uh, go on to item B, and this is, uh, one of those proclamations that is dear to my heart. Uh, you know, Patty, Terry, if you wanna stand up, please. I know you have, uh, some staff with you, and, and, uh, I, after we, uh, you're here by yourself?
Terry's on vacation.
Oh, okay. It's all right. You're, you're, I just want to, and, and I want you to recognize your staff and the people that, with you after we get through this. You know, this is one of those opportunities that, you know, uh, the mayor and the council get to recognize people in the, uh, community that have really gone above and beyond to, to foster economic development and small businesses within our community. So, without further ado, I, we have a proclamation, and, uh, and, um, and it reads, whereas Taos County Economic Development Corporation, uh, known as TCEDC, has been serving the greater Taos County community by advocating for food, land, water, and the culture of the people of northern New Mexico for over twenty-eight years. And whereas TCEDC is a national model for community food service regeneration. And whereas TCEDC has provided free training in food safety and USDA regulations to hundreds of people, and incubated hundreds of small businesses in arts and manufacturing and food. And whereas, hundreds of people have in the past, or are in the present, using TCEDC's five thousand square foot commercial USDA-approved kitchen to create added value agriculture products to help support their families. And whereas, the Mobile Montanza has provided a humane USDA-certified program to ensure healthy meat in the community, and helped land-based people hold on to their land and traditional life ways. And whereas, every year in the fall, TCEDC holds an event to celebrate harvest. And whereas, this year will be the first annual week-long collaborative fall harvest Thanksgiving for the food, land, water, and the culture of the peoples of northern New Mexico celebration. Now, therefore, I Dan Baroni, Mayor of Taos, do hereby proclaim November tenth through the sixteenth to become in perpetuity TCEDC Week. So, again, thank you, guys. [applause] And if you'd like to say a few words and introduce some of the staff that you have with you today, please, I would love to hear from you. A great opportunity within our community where we continue to foster small businesses and economic development, so...
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. And at this time, I would just really like to thank the community for the generations, centuries of keeping one of the most beautiful, unique communities. Um, and I think it's pretty much recognized even worldwide. We have visitors at TCEDC from all over, and they are always so impressed with the strength, we won't say stubbornness, of people, um, in this area, in terms of our mountains, our food, our people, our cultures, our languages, and keeping all of those. And it's been the honor and privilege of Terry Badhand and myself to have been, uh, TCEDC's directors for twenty-eight years now. Uh, none of which would we ever be able to do without our, our Board of Directors. of Directors, the community, and the amazing entrepreneurs in this community, and those land-based people who just keep growing wonderful food, raising animals, and providing us all with what we are, really need to nurture ourselves and our children and the coming generations. So I would like to actually, first of all, thank Mr. Scott Sanger, who's been TCEDC's attorney, pretty much pro bono, once in a while we pay him a little bit. For all these years. The reason that this proclamation has come forward is not because TCEDC or its directors or its boards asked for it, but because in the past few years, when we've had increasing struggles with funding, the worst ever, really, a group of wonderful people in our community have stepped forward, headed by Bridget Meyer, and become friends of TCEDC.[664.13][664.13](applause). And Bridget would like to say something. While she gets up here, I'll introduce our staff and some of our clients who are here as well. Mercedes Rodriguez, who's our main woman in every department, program manager, administrative assistant. Gilbert Suazo Jr., who is our Mobile Montanza manager.[691.13][691.13](applause). And somebody who animals actually just walk up to and say, "Go ahead, I'm ready."[698.23][698.23](laugh) It's really amazing. Ruth Gonzalez, who's been in the Food Center, and the kitchen clients wouldn't know what to do without Ruth. And we also have here a couple of our businesses who I hope that you have had the opportunity to taste some of the food out of the Food Center, which nobody uses preservatives, nobody uses chemicals. I mean, it really is wonderful, and it's very reflective of our cultures and our need for health. So Matt from Matt's Gluten Free, and Linda from Mello Bakery. Thank you so much for being here with us today. And Bridget, I know you wanted to say something, so I should mention our board members. President of our Board of Directors is Dan Baroni. Our vice president is Gabriel Romero. Our secretary treasurer is Riva Suazo of Taos Pueblo. And our other members are Ms. Judy Cuntu and Trinidad Jesus De Arwayo. And we rely on them for everything that we need to be able to do. And so, again, just thank you very much, Mayor. That's really amazing, and I wish Terry was here. I'm going to make her watch Channel 2.[783.51][783.51](laugh).
Patty.
Quick announcement, per the TCEDC Week collaboration, already we have enrolled UNM, and we will be holding an expo and feast right across the road on Saturday, November 15th, from about 10 to 5:00. And there will be vendors and speakers, and it'll be a wonderful celebration and Thanksgiving for the harvest. And the week prior, we will have films and classes, and you will be hearing quite a bit more of this. We are also in collaboration with the Taos Farmers Market, and we seek other collaborative alliances with other groups, and we want to make this a wonderful celebration for all that TCEDC does for us. And I can't thank you enough for this official designation. Thank you, in perpetuity, no less. Thank you.
Thank you.[858.01][858.01](applause). And Bridget, and Patty, again, you know, it's, this is one of those organizations during the economic downturn, you know, it was hard to keep the doors open. The executive directors, both you and Patty, I mean Patty, both you and Terry, and staff actually were, became volunteers, a lot of the staff became volunteers, and, but it kept the doors open, it kept those businesses moving. You know, right now, there's some discussion on how it's all going to work, and again, it's a great opportunity that Scott, you, Patty, and Terry, and the board has come to a resolution, and hopefully we can move this thing forward and keep the doors open from here on out. So again, thank you, guys, and we applaud you for those efforts.[914.01][914.01](applause). Thank you again.
Thank you, Mayor.
So we'll go on to next, item C, Resolution 1442, 1442, supporting Dream Tree Project, Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor Baroni, and council members. You have before you a resolution requesting the town of Taos to support Dream Tree Project's application to the New Mexico Department of Transportation to receive federal funding to purchase a vehicle for transportation of runaway homeless and disabled youth. And so I just want to ask for the town's support with this matter. And we're very excited to be pursuing this funding once again, and it's a really valuable tool for us to be able to get the young people access to the services that they need. And I stand for any questions.
And do you have that, a copy of that in front of you?
Yes, I do.
Would you read it, just for the record, so people have a little better idea what this is going to be used for?
Absolutely. The resolution reads, "The town of Taos hereby resolves that it supports the application for New Mexico Department of Transportation funds by the Dream Tree Project, a 501(c)(3) organization. The Dream Tree Project is applying for up to $25,000 to purchase a vehicle through the fiscal year 2016 Section 5310 Grant Program, Enhance Mobility for Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities, to transport runaway and homeless youth with severe emotional distress, post-traumatic stress disorder, and other behavioral health diagnoses. This vehicle will allow youth to access education, employment, behavioral health services, medical services, and enrichment activities."
Thank you. Counselor Peralta?
Mr. Mayor, just one question. Will this van be equipped to handle physical disabilities as well, or not?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel Peralta, Councilmember Peralta, we have not, at this time, requested a van equipped with a wheelchair lift, primarily because the numbers of youth that we see who are street homeless with that level of physical disability is fairly rare. But we would have the ability to take youth with physical disabilities not requiring a wheelchair lift.
Thank you.
Councilman Han?
Ms. Hummel, thank you for you and the organization's efforts on behalf of our youth, and that van is very much needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
So what is the wishes of the council?
Move for approval.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, further discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Cuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And good luck in getting that grant in. Thank you. So we'll go to item D, Paseo and Fall Arts Festival, Mr. Rick Bellis, and we also have Mr. Matt Thomas and Paul Figueroa with us, I believe. Mr. Bellis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to keep the council informed of the events going on in town, I think Fall Arts is doing a fantastic job of trying to keep us on the map and expand us as arts center internationally. And I think this year's Paseo event is particularly exciting, in that it brings the art out onto the streets, and I think approaches, reaches out to a younger generation to try to get them to be participating in the arts community here. With that, I turn it over to you two gentlemen.
I asked Matt if he was going first, he said, "No, you were." Okay. So I'm here this afternoon, mayor and council members, to update you on the Fall Arts Festival. It will be from September 26th through October the 5th, and this is the 40th year that the Fall Arts Festival has strived to recognize the creative people in this community, and to promote Taos beyond just the county, but throughout the state, the region, and the nation. This year, our festival will be in multiple locations, approximately, exactly six, all within an easy walk of each other in downtown historic district. Thousands of visitors come to Taos during that festival. It lasts 10 days. That does a lot for gross receipt tax and lodgers' tax. But more importantly, from my perspective, it gives artists an opportunity to sell their work, and I'm pleased to share with you that about $50,000 to $75,000 worth of art is sold each year during that festival. Last year, the Volunteer Board of Directors faced the challenge of losing our central, convenient exhibition space, the Taos Convention Center. In the spring, we conveyed a community-focused group. Galleries, businesses, arts organizations, artists, and marketing people were there to give us input for 2014, our 40th year, and how we might address that challenge. A major result was the decision to move the festival to several locations in the historic district of Taos, maintain quality art shows, expand our offerings, and most importantly, engage in collaboration with galleries, dining establishments, lodgers, small businesses. Since that time, we've had meetings with the Taos Chamber Board. We have organized business breakfasts for input. We have made presentations at the Taos Chamber, presentations at Taos Entrepreneurial Network, as well as Tabby, Taos Association of Bed and Breakfast Enns. At this time, I would like to recognize the assistance of the town of Taos in helping us address multiple locations, and in particular, Brian Gere and the town have worked to secure one of our downtown locations for the open component of the festival. So I know, did you give them a map?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I'm going to give you the Blue Trail map.[1363.51][1363.51](laughter). I want to share this with you, because it's important to me and to our board to share with you that the festival is in the heart of the historic district of Taos. There's a blue line, still visible, although I was told it was temporary, that connects over 20 historic sites, museums, cultural destinations in Taos. It's all within walking distance, if you can walk seven-tenths of a mile. But you don't have to do it all at once. You can stop, you can visit, you can explore, you can become a part of what Taos has to offer. So this is where the festival will be located this year. The Taos Select, a juried competition, will be at the Kachina Lodge and at the Taos Center for the Arts and Stables Gallery. The Distinguished Achievement Awards, a cash award recognizing contemporary artists and linking them to the artistic heritage of Taos will be at the Taos Art Museum at the Fetch and House. The Taos Inn, the living room of Taos, is hosting and curating an expanded memorial retrospective to look back at many of the artists who participated and helped Taos grow as an arts center and destination. The mural room in the historic county courthouse will be the setting for a display of historic photographs from the WP era, Works Progress Administration, of which our Taos treasure of frescoes by the Taos Quartet is on view for people. And finally, as I mentioned, with the help of the town, Brian Gere, we've secured the Guadalupe Gym for the Taos Open, a non-juried competition, and that's also the location for our youth art show. Taos already enjoys a national identity connected to the visual arts, and the festival this year will also focus upon some of the hidden treasures of Taos. In particular, the public art collections, both in government hands and in organizational hands. For instance, on Sunday, working with Shirley Fernandez and the Friends of the Taos Library, there'll be an open house at the library, in which we'll focus upon all the wonderful art that is also on view in that library. I've also worked with the Taos Volunteer Fire Department to see that the firehouse collection is open, and we have secured a volunteer to be there, and we'll just hope the fire alarms don't go off on those days. Another area that we're going to focus on this year is public art murals and sculpture in the historic district. So there'll be walking tours, as well as a talk by David Witt, former curator at the Harwood, and Federico Vial, who restored those frescoes over 20 years ago in the mural room. So we want to refocus with pride and share that with visitors and residents to the public art that exists here, particularly in the historic district. Additional offerings will be a film festival at the Harwood, honoring our land and environment, performances both at the Guadalupe Gym and at the Taos Inn. It's an exciting lineup. We had to go to an eight-page insert in the temple to share with this community all that the Volunteer Board and the artists of this community have put together for the 40th year. The big question has always been, how do we get around? How do we move people around? Jeez, everybody would rather, we hope, ride a bus, bicycle, but it's only seven-tenths of a mile. One of the ideas that came from the business meetings was to create a passport, and the businesses supported this by donating many, many prizes. And so we've put together a passport. You pick it up at any location, you go to all the venues, you get it stamped, just like you are entering another country, and you put that completed passport into our, I guess, a large fishbowl. And we'll draw out winning prizes for those who have been to all the venues. And I want to thank probably close to 30 local businesses who have donated for that passport prize. So that was one way that we came up to move people around the town during those 10 days. Then Matt Thomas heard of our efforts to keep the festival in Taos, in the historic district, and stepped forward with an idea that we fully embraced, both emotionally and financially. And so we are so pleased that on the opening weekend, as Town Manager Bellis noted, that the festival broadens its demographic reach, broadens its reach into art, so that we're presenting art that you don't find on an easel, that you don't necessarily have on a pedestal, that sometimes might be difficult to find in a museum or an arts center. But through Matt's efforts and his board, we're going to have a street party of art. Matt?
Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Mayor, and council members. As Paul mentioned, my name is Matt, and I am here to tell you more about the Paseo. The Paseo is a project of the Taos Fall Arts Festival, and we are working to bring art to the outdoors and along the streets of Taos. And this is in collaboration with the Taos Fall Arts Festival. I am a huge fan of the Taos Fall Arts Festival every year, either attending or participating. And when I received the email seeking volunteer help to transition into the new layout, I had an idea. And I came to the board, and I said, "What if we did a outdoor art festival that connected all of your venues?" And to my surprise, they enthusiastically said, "Let's do it." And so I went on and created another committee of And so I went on and created another committee of people. They were busy enough as it is, and we came up with the Paseo. And what it is, it's an outdoor art festival with installation, performance, and projection art. And you can see the map, I gave them copies of the map, and this is connecting all the venues. We needed a budget, so we did a Kickstarter fund and raised over twenty thousand dollars to get this started. And so this was done through the effort of over two-hundred-and-fifty community members who gave us five dollars, ten dollars, up to a thousand dollars, and to raise this money. And so we feel like this effort and this project is truly a community one, and one that will embrace the Taos Fall Arts Festival and enhance the impact of the community here in Taos. We're also gratefully sponsored by the Taos Fall Arts Festival themselves, working with Mr. Bellis and the town of Taos as a sponsor as well. And I want to thank him and as well as the incredible support of the town. Mr. Steve Kennebeck with Facilities has been extremely valuable in helping us. We are dealing with a very large portion of space, and working with the town with this has been incredible, especially doing this for the first time. Chief Weaver with the police department, Eric with the fire department, and French with the Public Works have all been very helpful in helping us to achieve all these pieces outside, on the sidewalks and plazas and property, Taos property, Taos property. But even more exciting is we've gotten the attention of even outside of Taos, and we are excited to get sponsorship from the Museum of Outdoor Arts out of Denver, Colorado. And so to see that our Fall Arts Festival is being seen and heard outside of New Mexico is truly exciting, and they're helping with marketing up there. So we're hoping for even more involvement from our neighbors to the north coming down to enjoy the festival. Also, local businesses like Life Taos have been invaluable helping us. And recently, UNM and their Introduction to Construction course were actually including different projects and collaborating with them to help build certain aspects of the festival. And then, of course, collaborations with the hardwood, the TCA, a number of local businesses and private landowners that we're negotiating with to place this artwork on. And then in addition, we've created four different workshops for teens in high school to engage with the visiting artists coming into town, working with aspects of science and math and construction, so that they have a hands-on approach in working with these artists, and then, of course, get to participate with the artists when the event happens on September twenty-sixth. It's gonna be an exciting, exciting day, incredibly busy weekend, and we're excited to also support the day before, which is the big concert on the plaza, by having several of our installation pieces available to show the visiting people who are coming up from possibly Santa Fe and Albuquerque for the Congo's concert, and as further representation of what the weekend will bring with the Paseo. I think that covers all, so thank you.
Counsel?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I just want to say, Paul, I'm just so grateful for you because you've brought this new life into so many things that needed new breath breathed into them, and your passion is just really apparent. I think that it's wonderful that, you know, you pushed this forward, you've gotten so many people involved, and thank you, Matt, and everyone involved in this, you know, it's all good. It's all good because in the end, you know, it all works for the good of Taos. So I just wanted to let you know that I'm grateful, and thank you for the art show at Town Hall. I love it, it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Gonzalez?
Mr. Mayor, Paul, thank you for, again, another awesome arts exhibit inside Town Hall, like Councilmember Conto pointed out. I wanted to commend you also on the Taos walking map, which lists every single one of our parking lots, both free and paid, which is a great, great thing. I mean, I don't think we've, I've seen one this detailed in a while, which is awesome because it shows our library, the Town Hall, fire station, the elementary school, and people that visit this community. And I know when I visit communities, it's always nice to see the inner workings of how the locals live, especially in their downtown areas. So I think it's an awesome, awesome map. I think the event's gonna be great, and I commend both of you for the hard work that you've done to bring some vibrance back to the downtown area.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. I will not take credit for that map. I'm happy to distribute it and to share it and to be a supporter of it, but that map was through Janet Webb Design and a community group that wanted to continue to expand the quick draw, and the first year when they took, put down blue tape to the different locations where artists were painting, we said, this could become something for Taos' history and culture on a more permanent basis.
Well, and I think a good thing, too, with the blue line map, you get so many locals that ask what that is. You know, what does that mean? So I think maybe even a marketing campaign would be interesting to throw out there to get the locals involved, to figure out exactly what that blue line means, that they themselves can view what we have right here within our own community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor.
I'm really looking forward to the Fall Arts Festival, by the way. And I think because of the new format on it, I think it's gonna bring a lot of energy to something that is maybe, you know, you look at things and say, well, if you do it the same way forever, it kind of loses its flavor, it loses its enthusiasm, and I think what you're doing now is gonna bring some new energy to it, and I look forward to that, and I hope that it will be a prosperity for the artists who participated in it. But there's one thing I was looking at on the map, and we put up a historical wall of art here at the Taos, at the Town Hall, and I don't see it on the map, and as part of the Fall Arts Festival, and I just think that I think that would be something in the historical aspects that you're bringing to the festival, that's something that might be of interest for people to see and understand some of the history behind the last four-hundred years, or a thousand years, actually, of Taos.
It's a good point, Councilmember Peralta. There is so much public art in tiles that often is not, is overlooked. It's, I'm not gonna say it's not appreciated, but I'm gonna say it's overlooked. And when I did a survey for the tiles arts council this last summer, summer of 2013, it was really quite surprising to me how much is there in the historic district, and that's a good example you have given. I'd also be remiss if I didn't point out that this is the twenty-fifth year that the Santero by George Chacon is there on the side of the plaza. Twenty-five years ago, public art murals began in Taos, and this year, thank goodness for Matt and his community, new art forms, new expressions of creativity, new people are gonna come to Taos and go, wow, I'm coming to Taos permanently, this is a happening place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, go ahead, Mr. Bellis.
Just a slight bit, have some, uh... In order to keep council informed, what we did was, since we knew we weren't gonna have the new lodgers tax board in place right away and a new marketing director, you had approved broad categories, and one of the things we did, and extending the contract with Griffin Associates, is I had held back about sixteen thousand dollars per quarter because we didn't seem to have an organized plan as to how to approach things. Rather than just having the generic, here's a picture of the gorge, here's a picture of the mountain, and it says Taos, we wanted to be able to publicize our local events. So I had agreed early on that certainly the Fall Arts Festival and Paseo were one of those events we did want to publicize, and we thought we'd probably spend about five thousand dollars, and as it is, it's only been about a thousand seventy-five dollars for the Paseo. But for them to have the extra day to get started on this really cool exhibit, interactive exhibit called Rain, that interacts with the public and they help create the art, as well as this large robot statuary piece that's gonna be at the gateway at Kachina, for them to bring them in a day early, it's gonna cost the artists a little more. So the Paseo has asked for an additional fifteen hundred dollars on top of that thousand seventy-five dollars, and with council's permission, I would like to go ahead, as we have more than enough money on that money we set aside in marketing dollars, and help them out with that. The payment of entertainers or direct exhibits is an eligible expense, which does not have to be RFP'd out under procurement. The other suggestion I would make is that we'd also anticipated, to help get the people around, that we would actually have to develop a loop with our buses, and I think the planning has worked out really well, that that actually mimics the bus routes. But since the passport, which is incredibly creative, has been created, I'd like permission that we waive the fare for our visitors that would have those art passports that came here to town to see those exhibits, for them to get on the bus and move around within the downtown. And again, we could use our marketing dollars to make up any difference that we might suffer in the revenues.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bellis, I think that's an excellent idea, and I wouldn't imagine that it would put us in a position to suffer, wouldn't say we'd have to recoup it, because overall, I think stimulating the arts colony aspect and bringing in those GRTs would ten times offset what we would lose, so that's an excellent idea.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Bellis. What ever happened to the marquee, the digital one that was formerly at Town Hall? Where is that?
Echo Park.
Is that the Echo Park? Oh, 'cause I was really hoping at some point in time that the town could maybe put that, if it wasn't being used, at the visitor's center to do like a public information board so that people passing on Paseo either direction could read it and see, you know, things like this going on, or Town Hall meetings, anything else. So I just wanted to sort of throw that out there, so...
Yeah, actually, Councilwoman, on Thursday, you approved the ICIP for the wish lists of our capital expenditures, and that's one of the items we're gonna look at, is the idea of an electronic bulletin board at the visitor's center, which will be a little more organized than all the banners, and then something for up here in front of Town Hall and at the park as well.
As long as it fits in the historical district, right?
It must be consistent with the ordinances of the historic district.
Councilor Peralta?
You know, Mr. Mayor, last week I was talking to Mr. Bellis about the idea of possibly increasing the number of members on the lodgers tax advisory board, since we're giving them more jobs to do and a little bit more assistance on that, and I was wondering if the council might consider adding two members to that board. Can't do it now, but for the next meeting.
Mr. Bellis, if you get that on our next agenda, I think that would be something we should look at. So, Mr. Bellis, are you looking for a, I want to say consensus, or moving forward with that expenditure?
Yeah, it's not an item that, since it's within the budget, that normally we would come to you with, but because these are new things, and I do want the council to be aware that we're trying them out, yeah, that if there's a consensus in the council that it's okay with you gentlemen and ladies, then we would proceed with it.
Okay. Nobody has a problem with it?
No problem.
All right, so, we'll go ahead, and again, thank you, Paul and Matt and Mr. Bellis and staff. You know, when people work together, this is the kind of things that we can get done. So again, appreciate it. This, you know, starts on Wednesday, goes through Sunday, and starts on Thursday, I guess, and goes through Sunday, and again, with a big music on the, in the plaza, free to everyone. And again, it's a great opportunity to showcase our community, so thank you, thank the council. You know, this is one of those opportunities that we have to showcase, so thank you.
Our pleasure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So next, we'll go on to item nine, citizens forum, citizens wishing to speak shall have the opportunity to do so, and we'll limit it to five minutes. Again, if it's something that we have heard already about the airport, we've had a number of sessions, if we've heard it already, we don't want to hear it again. If it's something new, we'll give you the opportunity, we'll give you your five minutes. We had a forum, and we were able to view it on TV again, so we'll go ahead and open it up. Again, if it's new material, we're wishing to hear it. If it's old material, we've already heard it, so go ahead.
I'm not sure if this is new or not.
You can go ahead and take a seat here, Mayor.
So this is...
And your name for the record.
Paul Christie. And thanks for letting us speak in this latest installment of the airport expansion saga. So the only thing I have to say about it at this point is that I'm disappointed that the town is planning a major development while doing everything it can to finesse the issue without informing any of the affected parties. I think the way the town is operating is subverting the democratic process. By applying for an administrative permit, the town is pulling an end run around property owners and citizens who live in the flight path of the proposed new runway. The administrative permit applies to public facilities like hospitals, libraries, firehouses, something all citizens benefit from, and to try and equate the airport with these facilities is a stretch. People living in proximity to the airport will find their property values affected and diminished, yet they will not be afforded even the minimum standard of being informed of the details of the project. No one that I have spoken to in the Las Colonia's area had any knowledge of the nature of the project, nor of its impact on their property values or on their lives. This is not only unfair and undemocratic, it goes against everything our newly elected officials have stood for. Everyone applauded the way you solved the command center fiasco and the annexation debacle. Both of these issues were the result of a corrupt administration that did not believe in a fair, transparent, and democratic process. They did everything they could to subvert the process and keep citizens out of the loop and in the dark. They believed that bringing citizens into the discussion just made things messy. So to cut to the chase, Mayor Barone, I am asking you, as the commissioner representing homeowners and citizens in the affected areas, to do the right thing and bring your constituents into the process. The town needs to be above board and transparent, and inform the citizens of the impact of the proposed airport expansion on their lives. So Commissioner Barone, I am asking you to cancel the administrative permit application and apply to the county for a major development permit, and give your constituents the basic rights that is their due. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Mr. Mayor, can I say that one thing on it?
Please.
Paul, so that the record is clear, the town doesn't apply for a type of permit. We have a pre-conference meeting, which is part of the new county land use code, and it's the determination of the staff based on the type of application as to what it qualifies for and how it will be reviewed. So that's, we can't withdraw something that we didn't have power to decide in the first place. And I also want to point out one other thing, not my capacity here, but my prior life at the county for the past four years prior to this, and that is that there were dozens and dozens and dozens of meetings held either by the county or by the individual residents, by the neighborhood associations, to develop a system of neighborhood organizations that were representative and duly elected by the people that actually lived or owned property in those areas, and so that they could stay informed on issues like this, and that elected officials could get a representative voice to give them guidance and direction on such matters. And all three of the areas that are affected that you've identified in the past are represented by county-approved neighborhood associations.
associations. They're formally recognized, their board of directors have been elected and formally recognized by the county. And all three of those, throughout those four years, were aware of this proposal. And there were meetings between the town and the county in which, when I sat over there as planning director, that the town came over to discuss the expansion of the airport, and would there be problems with zoning, or structures that were there that would interfere. And those meetings between the two departments clearly laid out that, given the chosen zoning that was selected by those neighborhoods, fully aware of the airport being there, that there would be no interference. Because the county has a twenty-seven-foot height requirement in all of those areas immediately adjacent, whether agricultural or residential. And in fact, some of the zoning along the sixty-four corridor was developed deliberately with the airport in mind, as by the property owners, was identified as a future high-density commercial corridor. So, for the idea to keep being repeated that somehow the people in those neighborhoods didn't have a voice, and as I'm sure you're aware, and probably have a copy of, all three of those neighborhood associations met, and all three of them asked the airport staff to go out and meet with them, and all three have sent a letter saying, as long as some flight adjustments could be made as to landing and taking off, they have no objections whatsoever to the new runway.
That's something, that's something recent that just happened. But, but that's...
If you'll come up, if you'll come up.
I mean, that's beside the point, you know. I'm not lying when I say that everyone I've talked to in that area had no idea, when I showed them that, that airport, the flight map, they had no idea of the impact of the proposed runway on their property, no one. You know, because...
But, Paul, that's your interpretation of what the impact will be. And in fact, I've had people approach me, very scared, out at Mesa Brewing, and asked if they could meet, or through JR at the newspaper. And it's been represented to them that planes would be taking off and landing right over their house, or could crash into their house, when in fact, their house is nowhere near the runways. And if you look at the map, and it's been totally misrepresented, no structures are going to have to be bought, or demolished, or properties. All the no-build zones, all the height-restricted zones are within the property already owned, and that's been owned for a decade by the town of Taos. This isn't going to affect any property values, it isn't going to require any purchases, any houses to be demolished, it isn't going to affect anybody's property values, because in fact, those flight paths on an uncontrolled airport are already open under the current airport to anyone who wants to fly those patterns now. So, it's been misrepresented.
Yeah, I, I've never, I've never told anybody that their house is going to be demolished, they never gave any of that idea. I just, I just show them the flight path map, the green zone, which requires, I didn't, I didn't study it in detail, but it requires, among other things, that a homeowner has to inform, once they sell their property, they have to inform a buyer that they're in the flight path, right? At least that's how it was laid out on the Armstrong schematic there. So, that was one of the criteria, and I didn't get further into that. But the other thing is, you know, when you have a formal, when you normally apply for a major development like this is, you have to inform homeowners within a thousand feet of the, of the proposed project. And it just seems to me that that's, that's a fair and democratic process. You know, because most of those people, they're so involved in their own lives, they don't really know what's going on with, with the airport and the construction and so forth. So, why, you know, I get the feeling that the town is afraid to inform those people in that area, you know, that, that there's going to be this project, that whatever impact it's going to have on their, on their property values, and go through the normal process. So, to me, you know, a layman, this administrative permitting is, it just seems to subvert the process. I, you know, I think those people deserve to be informed and to have a public hearing.
And have you done that? You may claim that you have.
That's, that's on the town, right? The town is a developer here. It's, it's required, if they do it, if they do a permitting process, they're required to inform every homeowner within a thousand feet.
And where does it say that?
It says it in the, in the permit.
No, it says it in the town...
I'll bring it, I'll bring it to you.
It says it in the county land use code. And the county land use code says, "The planning director and/or the planning commission and attorney for the county shall make the determination as to what form an application for development must take." So, you can't quote a part of the code, a code you want, and then take away the authority from the county to enact that code.
Wow.
The county has made that decision.
Okay.
And I can tell you, as the gentleman that wrote that section of the code, it was intended for all public infrastructure. Because you would never get a firehouse built if you had to come in for a major, you would never get an elementary school built.
Look, a firehouse helps everybody, and...
You would never get a power line built.
Those things help everybody. I mean, we had, I had the conversation with the mayor. I said, "Mr. Mayor, this airport is going to be, you know, it's going to benefit at one percent." He said five percent, I don't know if you recall that. And I said, "I'll give you five percent." This is a very small segment of society that's going to benefit from the airport. It's not like a hospital. I mean, how can you equate an airport to a hospital, or, or a firehouse, or a library? I mean, you know, I've never been to the airport. Probably ninety percent of the people here have never been. So, I don't know, I just, I just don't like to feel the tenderness.
Less than, less than five percent of the houses within the county have ever been served by a fire department or a police call. So, do you think we should not have fire departments and police departments, just because they only benefit five percent?
No, you're misrepresenting what I said.
So, okay, is there anybody, and Paul, I, I, you know, and I just want to make a statement here. You know, I've had two people from my family that were airlifted by fixed wing. One was because he was on a liver transplant list. And when they pick you up, they give you eight hours to be airlifted out and have that transplant done. If that airport wouldn't have been there, and the wind was blowing, in fact, they almost couldn't land because the wind was blowing in the wrong direction. If he would, he would not be alive today if that wind had been just a hair bit stronger. But because the wind was the, at the, the way it was, they were able to pick him up, they were able to get him there, he got his liver transplant. I had a niece that was in a, in a tubing accident. She broke her back. The time they, they brought her to the airport, the helicopter could not take off because of the wind. The fixed wing was just barely able to take off. And they got her there, and she's alive today also. So, you know, in, in my instance, it's saving lives. If we save one life, they can fly over my house all the time they want. And they do currently. I do have a house in that area.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, I think that's a point that should be made for the public, is that in fact, you're, you're in your wife's house, her parents' house, your parents' house, and a number of your family members' houses, as well as your business are directly under the current flight path and the future projected flight path.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Tom.
Anyone else? Again, if it's new material?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Bob Draper. I'm a business owner here in Taos.
Thank you, Bob.
And I, I just want to emphasize that a great many in the business community believe that the airport is a, an essential part of the transportation infrastructure for folks getting in and out of Taos. We are happy to fund roads that get people in and out of Taos more safely, more comfortably, and quicker. We're happy to fund, and we were, we benefited from a very eloquent presentation from Luis Reyes, wherein he talked about the information highway coming in and out of Taos, that piece of infrastructure, information infrastructure, being important in ways that we know about now, but also being important in ways that we have yet to find out about. He mentioned the gas station in Costa, and the graphic artists also, who are benefiting from the fast speeds of broadband. It's not straining an analogy too much to, to say, if, if transportation, if air transportation in and out of Taos becomes faster, safer, and more comfortable, it's a good thing, and it benefits the economic development of Taos. And at least this business owner is very much in favor of it. We don't know all the benefits that improving the airport is going to give us, but we do know a few right now. Some have already been mentioned. The air ambulance service has obvious benefits. Search and rescue was mentioned in the informational meeting that Fritz Hahn promoted earlier. Firefighting, when, when the Pueblo was on fire, the firefighting, many of the firefighters were based out of the Taos Airport, and it shortened the life of that fire and saved property and, and lives. Personal transportation, there are roughly forty-five airplanes that are, and people don't know this, and people who haven't been out to the airport should go there and look around and see what's out there. How can you condense, condemn something if you've never seen it? But about forty-five people have airplanes that are based out there, and they use them for business purposes. I know I do. If I have to run and pick up a part in Albuquerque, I zip down there in forty-five minutes, and I'm back. And some hotel that's out of water because they don't have a pump, suddenly is back in business. So, that, that, it enhances a lot of aspects of business. Education, there's an educational component wherein kids are taken on flights, and hopefully, that might help with careers in aviation, of which there are many. There have been thirty years of discussion about this airport. I've been to, I've been to meetings thirty years ago with people from the Pueblo, Pete Domenici's office, all of which, to all of which the public was invited. There have been, I know, there've been over a hundred meetings about this, specifically about the airport, not to mention the neighborhood association meetings that Mr. Bellis was referring to. So, to say that, I, without being personal, all of this fear mongering about, about the conspiratorial aspects of the whole process of getting the airport approved, it's not, that's not based in fact. So, I would, I would hope that that, that kind of fear mongering, I'll say it again, would, would cease. We have now in front of us, the process has resulted in a contract for construction, and a local contractor was low bidder on that, on that project. The initial, you know, it's on the agenda, the initial phase of construction is five million bucks. Five million bucks given to a local contractor is going to recycle through the economic life of Taos. Depends on what you believe the multiplier is, Mr. Peralta would know it better than I. But maybe the multiplier is five times, that's kind of the conventional wisdom. So, this five-million-dollar contract is going to get twenty-five million dollars worth of, was I wrong? Was it four?
One and a half.
One and a half? Oh, okay. All right. So, anyway, it, it gives gross receipts and jobs to, to people in Taos. Thank you for hearing me out, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Anybody else with new material?
This should be new material, hopefully. I went to, I think, all of the, all of the EIS meetings, and...
Excuse me, sir. Can you please state your name?
My name is Seth Brown, and I've lived in Seiko for, since nineteen fifty-six. So, I've been watching what's going on with the economy and just the dynamics here all these years. Okay, first of all, with the EIS meetings, and this is always just kind of overlooked, every single meeting was packed full of people protesting the airport, every single one that I went to. And this is, can be seen in the commentary of the EIS. Okay? The FAA completely ignored that. There's no purpose in having an EIS in commentary if the comment, if the people all protest the airport, and there's no result. Okay? So, the only other time I've seen there's, there's been adequate notice was for the forum. The room was packed full of people opposing the airport. So, I'm just pointing out to you, in our petition gathering, and our talking to the people of the Pueblo, there is huge opposition to this airport out there. It is not coming from people who are going to make money from the airport. All of the people that I have seen who are pro-airport, there seems to be links to making money on the airport. Now, I wanted to point out another thing here. The city councils in Santa Fe and Taos, town, the governments in Santa Fe and Taos have been promoting infrastructure for the wealthiest level of society for the last few decades. And in, in Santa Fe, the locals are pretty much gone. They're gone. And this process is beginning, it's been going on in Taos, and I lived in Seiko for fifty-three years. I had to move away. I tried to buy, buy land for a farm. I got too far in debt, and I had to move away because it costs so much money to buy any farmland in Taos anymore. This is going to eliminate farmers from this area. It is going to happen, and it is happening already. And by promoting infrastructure, like this airport, for the wealthiest section of society, what happens is that the wealthy come in, they buy up our assets, it's not available for the locals anymore, and they're eventually replaced. And this is happening in a lot of towns in the West, especially when there's a ski valley. So, I'm extremely worried. I'm actually worried whether I'm going to be able to even afford to live here for the rest of my life. I have a lot of friends I grew up with, they're, they're gone. They're in Phoenix, they're in Denver, they're in Albuquerque, they can't make it here because it's too expensive. And the wages that are paid, that can come from construction industry, which has been a major industry here, those wages do not come anywhere near keeping up with the, the cost of buying land, renting, and so on and so forth. So, it's just a dynamic, it's complex, it's difficult to see, but it's, it's already happening in Taos. And I think if this airport goes in, what's going to happen is, the billionaire set that has moved into a lot of towns in the West is going to find it very convenient to get here. It's difficult to get here now. And there, there's a billionaire owns the ski valley, he has the money, and the, someone came up to me who, who works for Bacon, and pointed out that they do want regular service here. So, it's just, it's just bringing in a group that's so wealthy, they can buy us out. And I'm really concerned about it. And that's why I think, the reason why the rooms get packed whenever there's notice. And that's why we're hoping with this lawsuit, that it will bring in the Pueblo, who's totally opposed to this airport. I haven't met a single person there that's for it, and they were not noticed. There's never been, as soon as the EIS was over, everything went underground. And there was, it looked like there was a real strong deliberate effort to prevent notice to the public as soon as the EIS was over. That's just, that's just the way this, the, the whole pattern in this. So, we're just trying to get the public in to, to voice their opinion, because there's huge, there's huge opposition still.
Thank, thank you, Seth.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Mr. Mayor, there's just one comment I have to make continually about the, the knocking of billionaires and multimillionaires within our community and within this, this country. And I take huge offense to that, because they afforded me an opportunity to come back to the community I love. I mean, and that's through direct work. Had it not been for these millionaires building houses, these houses getting old, and me being able to continually replace windows in them, I wouldn't be here. My kids wouldn't be here. And you know what? I am a native son of Taos. My family has resided in this community for hundreds of years. I can trace my roots back to the Conquistadores, the same ones that pulled the injustices on the Pueblo. I'm a different person. No, I'm not proud about that, John. I'm saying I'm a different person. That does not resonate who I am. But what it does resonate is the fact that I have been able to stay here and raise my family in this community. So, the continual talk about bashing on billionaires and millionaires coming to this community, it's getting old. Because members... Because members of this council, including our mayor, has been able to, to raise a family and run a business, a small business, because I'm not big business, and I know the mayor's not big business. But it's just that continual harping of that. You know what? Right now, we survive off crumbs from the millionaires. But the difference is, is that we survive. I'm here. My kid's here. My family's here. There's a difference. So please, respect the fact that they bring money to this community, irregardless of how it gets here. Everybody has the last-minute mentality of the last one in. And that's not fair. It's not fair to the local kids of this community. And the fact that we can keep them here, raise them here, give them an education here. My son just left to college, and it kills me every day that he doesn't come home at night. Because I don't have anything to offer him here. And the one opportunity that we've finally get, we're kicking them out. That's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anybody else from the public? Please. Again, if this is new material.
Mayor, council persons, my name is Louise Hummingbird, and I'd just like to know what is going to be done to protect us environmentally. Because the expanded airport in Sedona caused problems for local residents with fuel dumping and, and noise. And also, I'm now hearing about residents around the airport in Santa Fe being complaining of skin rashes. So I'm very concerned about the environmental impact of an expanded airport. I wanna know what, what are you gonna do to protect us from all that, the fuel dumping and...
Mr. Mayor?
Gonzalez.
John, could you come up here?
Thank you, Louise.
I would, this is another one of the things being said in the community that I would just like to clarify, that someone saw a line that said that in case of an emergency, particularly where we're at high altitude, where, and, and it isn't just civil aviation, it's a rule for military aircraft, commercial aircraft. Would you wanna be on a commercial airliner with, all filled up with high-octane aviation fuel heading to the ground? Or would you want that pilot to try to eject as much fuel as possible before you hit the ground and the plane didn't incinerate? That's the rule that's allowed. And somehow, that's been misconstrued that, you know what? If I don't feel like I wanna come in very fast on this runway, I'll just dump my fuel. John, is, are pilots allowed to just indiscriminately jettison fuel anywhere they feel like it?
Absolutely not. It, it goes against Environmental Protection Agency rules. And I'm, I'm, I have been a certified aircraft mechanic since nineteen eighty-seven. I don't know of any business jets now, and certainly not any single or twin-engine airplanes that even have that capability to dump fuel. Certainly not any of the business jets that, that fly into Taos. They don't have the capability to dump fuel. It's, it's dangerous. It's not allowed by the EPA. And for maybe large airliners, I, I don't know, I haven't worked on those. They may have that capability, but it would be a very rare and a very high-level emergency for them to do something like that.
And it's my understanding from looking at this on the internet that in fact, where something as simple as jetliners have dropped what they call brown snowballs, some, for some reason, a waste tank had a leak and it froze and fell, that they were not just civilly liable for any damage that they caused, but that the EPA held them a hundred percent responsible for the cleanup and in fact fined them for doing that. So I'm imagining that if you dumped fuel, which is a hazardous substance, you'd face the same laws as dropping anything from an airplane.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Anyone else? New material? Yes?
My name is Marilyn Hoppe. Hi.
Marilyn, is it new material?
Yeah, it is. I just wanted to read a, a little email I got about two weeks ago that I don't think was intended for me. It says, "Please, please, please distribute this and make every effort possible to get individuals of pro-airport to show up in as much mass support as possible. There's a real possibility that if enough detractors get the attention of the newly-elected, this project may be haunted. I ask your assistance as both friend and your city counselor to please pack the house and close the chapter on this historic and monumental accomplishment of administrations passed, most of whom have been voted out of office, by the way, along with countless efforts by individuals like yourself. It is absolutely crucial that we do not allow the small radical group of people to jeopardize this project." I think that means people like me. "Please pass this out accordingly and help create the dialogue. Hope you're well." And my only further comment is that Counselor Gonzalez's efforts are admirable in that he wanted there to be an open forum. Unfortunately, he was not there, nor was Counselor Peralta, and I'm, was very sorry not to see you there either, Mayor Barone. But a lot of people did show up, and, and the count was between eighty-five and a hundred twenty-two different, I didn't count, I was sitting in front and I couldn't see everybody, but it's quite a crowd there. And, and Mr. Gonzalez's efforts did manage to produce right around a half a dozen people who are pro-airport. Everybody else was not in favor of this expansion. And, and this expansion, I very much sympathize with your concerns about safety and your family members. Nobody has opposed a crosswind runway. We do not oppose that. We do not, we do not want a very long, strong runway that is an open invitation to very large planes in our skies. And I really appreciate you listening to me for one more time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn.
So anyone else?
Stevens Diaz. Stevens Hall. "The Alamosa Colorado Airport is a hundred and five miles distant. Los Alamos Airport is seventy-five miles distant, and Santa Fe Airport is eighty-five miles distant. An expanded runway and airport in Taos is simply not necessary, given three airports an hour and a half to two hours away. Given a good traffic day, low volume, smooth flow, and time of day, I'm sure there are folks in Taos boasting of reaching the Albuquerque Airport in two hours. If so, that's a fourth airport, a fourth under two op, a fourth under two-hour option. Maybe the Angel Fire Airport represents a fifth location, a fifth option. A fond and often abused or misused buzzword is regionalization. Be it airports, be it emergency communications, economic development, or police, fire, and homeland security operations, simply said, there are more than enough regional airports within two hours, obviating the need for an expanded runway and airport in Taos, notwithstanding justifiable safety concerns and the concerns expressed by the mayor. At the recent airport forum, a pilot reported being unable to achieve flight with three passengers and associated load. Turns out, the aircraft was underpowered, maybe severely underpowered, as was pointed out by a member of the audience. Safety is a function of geography, atmospherics, weather, and pilot skill and knowledge, as well as runway length. Safety is also very much a function of individual restraint and responsibility, by which I mean the restraint necessary not to attempt takeoff or landing in conditions which compromise any safety envelope." At a hearing in two thousand and six, Dr. Sid Martin of the National Park Service, the Director of Indian Affairs and American Culture for the Intermountain Region, said, "There are not many communities like this," I'm quoting, "like this left in our nation or our world. Why would we not want to preserve such a special place? It's easy to say that a few more flights or a bit more noise will not make a difference. It is not for us to judge this, though, but for the people of the Pueblo, who are members of the living community that are protected by this designation. The incremental diminishment of isolation, quiet, natural beauty, and distinctive culture is what destroys a place's character in the end. The leadership of Taos Pueblo understands this and has remained resolute in working to protect their culture." Again, this was two thousand and six. "As I am sure that you realize, the net result is that their efforts, the efforts of the Pueblo, protect the environment of this valley and the community of Taos as well." She goes on to say, "After a lot of analysis and consultation, the FAA has determined that the airport expansion would have an adverse effect on Taos Pueblo. We agree with their determinations. The next step in this process is to consider how to reduce or eliminate that adverse effect. These mitigations can take any form, from stricter regulations on flight patterns to changing the runway alignment, to even perhaps not completing the project at all." Governor Swa, Gilbert Swazoo Senior spoke at that same hearing, and he said, quote, "The Pueblo is pleased that the study of future development of scheduled commuter air service shows the lack of demand for such service in the past and insufficient demand to justify establishment of such future service." October twenty-seventh, two thousand and six, the mayor, Neil King, of the village of Taos Ski Valley, said, "Creating a viable, safe, regional airport is also a key component to bringing visitors to northern New Mexico, as well as giving people the option to utilize multimodal transportation options." As for multimodal transportation options, how about twenty-four million dollars spent on newer refurbished sidewalks throughout the community? And I know you can't take FAA money and do what I'm projecting, but you go for the right, the right kind of money. Twenty-four million dollars spent on newer refurbished sidewalks throughout the community, on newer refurbished roadways and bicycle lanes, and on an extensive network of trails for pedestrian, bicycle, and non-motorized transportation that would be used every day by every member of this community. A network of trails used by children to get to and from school, used by those looking for a healthy, invigorating, and stimulating way to commute, to the extent that you have to commute around here. You can walk in most cases. Used to visit classmates, friends, and neighbors. Used to visit the fiestas and the county fair. Used to visit the town library or the Talpa Community Center Library. Used to attend town council, county commission, and other community meetings and gatherings. That is used by all the members of this community who wish to know their community more intimately. This multimodal network of sidewalks, bicycle lanes, and community trails can even be used by visitors who wish to share in that intimate knowledge of this particular community, this particular place, this particular watershed." Eight January two thousand and seven, Rudi Abada writes, former counselor, "The proposed additional runway will increase access of the airport and thus help provide more reliable future commuter air service." Looking to provide air service. He goes on to say, "A commuter airline that would provide service in the future to our community will most likely be a higher-performance twin-engine turboprop or small cabin-class jet aircraft." This is eight years ago. We're now looking at thirty-passenger aircraft, sixty, I think it's sixty-five thousand pounds. I don't know whether it's net or gross weight. So we've gone from, in eight years, from twin-engine turboprop, small cabin-class jet aircraft to thirty-passenger aircraft. The greater length of runway is necessary...
Go ahead and wrap it up, Steve. You're, go ahead and wrap it up.
Oh. With respect to restraint, it seems to me that's, that's the, the solution. You don't land and take off when you, when you shouldn't. You have a properly-powered aircraft, and you use the knowledge and the skill and the proper aircraft that meet the requirements of the airport as it presently exists, with whatever sort of crosswind runway you build, that doesn't allow for any kind of future expansion. What I'm trying to say is, you don't, you, you don't need this. We need, we don't need it now. We need the twenty-four million dollars spent first on the members of this community as opposed to bringing visitors in to use, to use our community. Let's, I, I think you know what I'm trying to say. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Anyone else? Again, new material?
Jean Green. I have a statement. You're about to make a five-million-dollar decision. I'd like to make a statement about that. I suspect that within the next few minutes, you will pass approval on items ten D and E, the acceptance of funding from the FAA and the approval of funding for construction of the airport expansion Phase One. If you do approve these allocations, even while fully knowing that this puts the status of the World Heritage Taos Pueblo at risk, and that Taos Pueblo may lose World Heritage status due to the airport expansion threat already listed as threatened since nineteen ninety-three, if you do approve this with full knowledge of that, then shame on you. You were elected by the people to represent the people. If you do approve the funding even while knowing full well that the Town of Taos passed Resolution Ten Forty-nine adamantly opposing Cannon's Low-Altitude Training Area, and knowing full well that these plans are still on the table and will be augmented by a new longer runway, then shame on you. You are not following Town of Taos mandates. You were elected by the people to represent the people. If you do approve this funding while knowing there is a pending lawsuit with the county alleging improper and nonexistent procedures in zoning and lack of legal landowner notifications and hearings, knowing that property values in neighborhoods near the airport will plummet, then shame on you. You were elected by the people to represent the people. If you do approve these allocations, even while knowing that the majority of the public has opposed this project since day one, with hundreds of official comments opposing and only a few in support, even through today with less than a handful in support at the public forum and the rest opposed, you are not representing your community. If you approve this funding knowing these facts, then shame on you. You were elected by the people to represent the people. Please, out of respect for your community, do not approve these items today. These all-important issues must be examined and resolved before proceeding. You were elected by the people to represent your community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you, Jean.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Lopez, do wanna ask a question. You know, when, when you, a person buys a piece of property, isn't the responsibility of the realtor to let them know that the airport is, they're buying a piece of property next to the airport?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, I would assume that if someone's buying a piece of property, they would know its location and know the, what's adjacent to it. But yes, the realtor does have some sort of responsibility to disclose any possible adverse conditions of the property purchased.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Mayor, I believe...
Your name for the record.
My name is Bill Gowan.
Thank you, Bill.
Forty-eight years here in Taos.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak, and thank you, councilmen. I think it's a really difficult situation that you find yourselves in here now. And on that subject that was coming up, I used to be a GB ninety-eight, a general contractor, and there is indeed laws. New Mexico has a sunshine law because so many people have been hurt by buying properties that didn't turn out to be what they thought they were getting. And there is triple damages, there is triple damages plus triple lawyer damages if you should misrepresent in the sale of a piece of land what it is. So yes, indeed, it does need to be mentioned, and I've already spoken with a realtor, and it has to be mentioned as of now because it's something, it's being mentioned as of today. And a realtor told me, no one will buy a piece of land in the airport danger exclusion zone. So as of today, hundreds of people have had their properties made significantly less in value. Now, let's do a thought experiment for a second and see how we could do... Now, let's do a thought experiment for a second and see how we could do this and satisfy everybody. It's not right to argue against the airport. You, Mayor, you well pointed out that the medical benefits to all of us, even one life, we would all give anything to save one life. Yet, on the other hand, to suddenly make hundreds of homes so that no one would buy a piece of land in the airport danger exclusion zone, what will be the long-term effect on Taos of this? Those people can't sell their homes, so they won't sell them, but they will not improve them, they will not make them better, and eventually, people in a natural course of events, they leave the neighborhood and they won't be coming back. This will result in abandoned properties. The long-term effect of this whole thing is to create the Taos Airport slum. That's what it's done everywhere else. Okay, so how, let's do a thought experiment. How can we do this so that we can have our airport and not harm our citizens? Well, there'd be a number of different solutions, variations on this, but here is one idea. It could go on Rim Road. The advantages to putting it on Rim Road would include that the current mile-and-a-half-long runway doesn't give us any growth into the future. If we had it out there on Rim Road and we needed to make it bigger again, no doubt we're going to have to do that as Taos grows, as more people want to come here, as we want better medical services here and so forth, we'll want it even bigger. Well, this airport we're about to build will run right directly into the homes already. There's no way to make it bigger. So by putting the airport in the right place to begin with, we protect the future of Taos. And secondly, let's just look at this little thought experiment. The obvious objection would be, hey, it's going to cost money. Where are we going to get the money? Well, then, we have to look that we have a way of doing this that would give us all the benefits with none of the harm, but we're not going to do it because it costs money. Therefore, if we're going this way that we are currently going and making hundreds of people's properties valueless, no one, according to the realtor, will buy one of those properties as of today, well, basically, we're stealing the value of all those people's properties in order to save the town the money of buying a proper airport that could serve us forever and ever. I also think that perhaps, but it wouldn't be as easy, but perhaps land to the north, but it might interfere with two mode out there, I just don't know. But at any rate, a different piece of land, and especially Rim Road doesn't have people living there, it's flat. It has pavement and it has electricity. So, those are good things to begin on that. And thank you for hearing me, councillors, because, hey, and also, the people did vote on this, but it was on a slightly different issue, but they did vote. And so the people would think, if this is a different issue than what they voted on before, well, then, we should vote on it again and follow the will of the people because this is America. And so what you as a council did before, to accept that the people could vote and you're not legally bounded by it, well, that made it possible for the people to vote. If you force the people to generate a referendum that's binding on the council, it's really trouble on the people and really trouble on yourselves and wastes a lot of our community's wealth. You were very generous, in the case of Walmart, to accept that, well, we're going to have a referendum, it's not official, but we'll probably do what you want us to do because you know this is America. Thank you for hearing me on that because the people want a referendum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? If not, we'll go ahead and close the citizens' forum and we'll go on to matters from staff. Financial update, Ms. Marietta Fambro?
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. You have a July financial report in front of you. I will just go over some of the highlights. Just based on, we didn't have a second meeting in August, that's why I'm a little late on the report, but you'll get another report for August on the next council meeting so we can catch up on our monthly reporting. Looking at the grocery receipts tax for the month of July, which is May's activity, we were actually down 3.5% from the previous fiscal year. Some of the categorical decreases were in the retail trade and accommodation classifications. A couple of increases were in utilities and also in unclassified establishments. Couple of revenue sources up this first month of the fiscal year is building permits. And I double-checked with planning on that, they received probably about the same number between last year and this year in July, but they had a valuation of pretty much twice or nearly two and a half times the valuation from last year. The expenditures are really just the first month of comparisons. A little adjustments are like an executive compared to last year, we had an additional position in that department. In finance, we do have the vacancy position for the business manager that is still being advertised. And also in police, a couple of officers just for the first month that weren't in here. And reoccurring costs for the joint powers agreement and for the inmate contract, we brought those two budgets down this fiscal year, so that's a little bit less this year. Fire department is up a little, but it's just a timing issue of paying for the fireworks contract, and that was $20,000. So, starting the year, we still have our ending fiscal year balance of 2.4 million, and that's roughly an additional 54 days of reserve. And throughout the process, we'll be moving that money into their own funds and reporting that probably in the third quarter, just so that we can have some flow going into the next few months. Capital projects, really, beginning July, we just try to pay off some payables from previous year's projects. Also, opened one purchase order for a vehicle for the Parks Department. And other than that, we've just been starting to work with RFPs for engineering services and bids for other things that have come up in the last couple of months, which will be more detail on next month's report. Other than that, debt service, we have a total outstanding principal of 13,000, 13,176,000. This year's principal payments is $1 million and interest payments of 430,000 in summary. We did pay out one of loans last year, which was the landfill. We had two of those and we paid that one off. So, the second page, you can really see the numbers. If you have any specific questions on any of those revenues or the departments, I will stand for that now.
Councillor Peralta?
Marietta, going down to the enterprise funds, I noticed that the water fund were down about $32,000. Is that due to the rains that we've had? In other words, I don't know if you know what the billing was in comparison from this year to last year, this is actual revenues, but-
Right, these are actual revenues for, and which one are you specifically looking at? Because they're pretty much equal to, oh, I see, I see, water services.
Water charges.
Water services. You know, I'll have to look at that because if there was any kind of big adjustments for the month of July this year, that could affect it. I didn't look at that one, I'll look and see, but that could be one of the things there.
I was just thinking of the rains that we've gotten might have people's, not having the water as much and so saved us some water.
Actually, because this billing period would be from June through July, so it might miss it, so I'll double-check and get back with you on that one. Because it could be that or adjustments within this fiscal year, but I don't think we had too many adjustments on there.
Because I know that in my usage, I'm down this year from last year, and particularly for the whole summer, so.
Right, with all the rain, it's, it is, it will affect it, it will be less.
Thank you.
But I will for sure double-check to make sure I'm correct on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Bellis. Just a request, Mr. Cordova, it's kind of boring for the audience to sit out there and hear us talking about budgets when they can't really look at the numbers. Pending your and Rick's approval, is there any way we can get this up on the big screen there and for you to kind of follow the conversation and not necessarily now, but in the future, so that you can kind of highlight it so that the public begins to become aware of what an enterprise fund is and what our general revenues are and where those sources are coming from? So, something to keep the interaction going.
Mr. Mayor, councillor Hahn, in the future, we will have that available for you and it's not, Marietta didn't bring it in a digital format, so we will make it available going forward.
Right, or just off the public, the public meetings scroll-down thing?
Yeah.
And I can use the thing and I'll highlight since I'm the one that's going to talk about it.
Like off the big screen, Marietta, is that, yeah, I think that it'd really serve the public well to see where their money is being spent and-
Can't you bring it up off the webpage?
Yes.
Do you have it right now?
No, you can bring it up, the public docs on the-
I can.
Yeah, you can just bring it and click on the item and it'll bring all the backup. Pretty much how they see it.
Thank you, Mary.
And I apologize for that because I did ask him if I should be, he's going to be putting these up on a consistent basis, so now that we know, we'll coordinate it and get them up.
No apology necessary, you're working very hard, but thank you, Marietta, and thank you, Mr. Cordova.
So, in the future, we'll make sure that we get that done. Thank you.
Questions?
Any other questions on the financial update?
I don't, Mr.-
Okay, so, we'll go on to the annual operating budget for FY 2014, 2015, DFA approved. Marietta?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, this is just a formality that's stated in the statute that we have to bring back the approved budget from DFA, which I received August 17. The mayor got a letter, you can see the backup to that, and it's just making sure that we make it part of our minutes that DFA did approve it. And you can see in the letter some of the things that they point out about, in the procurement code, Chapter 13, which is known as the anti-donation clause, just to make sure that we follow that and don't, and adhere to that section. And then just to say that whatever's approved, that we follow within the budget amounts and whatever that is, that's pretty much my job to make sure that we don't exceed any budget amounts that are in the, that are recorded here. So it's just a formality and making part of the minutes that the approved budget from DFA is accepted.
Councillor Peralta?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the operating budget as accepted by DFA.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? If none, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go on to Item C, Resolution 1439, budget adjustment request. Marietta?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, this is the first budget adjustment request for the year, and it pertains to a couple items down for Garcia Underground for the construction of Camino Merced Water and Sewer Project. We're looking, we need additional $10,000 from the street maintenance project for the street portion and $26,000 for the water sewer portion in order to award the contract. So, the $26,000 is coming from the unreserved fund balance in the utility fund, which is Fund 81, and I think I have all the backup for your review.
All right. Councillor Peralta?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, and this is a question to French. Two things, French. One is that I'd like to have the report from the engineers indicate all the individuals who bid and the bid amounts, and then the recommendation as to who we awarded to and for what reason. We only got the letter recommending that we awarded to the winner of, I'm assuming the low bidder. The other question I have is, in that letter, the indication was that we were about 50,000 or so above budget on the original bid, and they were asking for negotiation down into our budget. What adjustments to that project were made in order to bring it into budget? I didn't see that in my report, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, okay. Did you see it in my side, or are you talking about his agenda item?
His agenda item.
Because I have his summary in my report.
I understand, but I need to see it for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councillor Peralta, thank you for the question.
I want to know if you know what she's talking about.
I don't know what anyone's talking about. But councillor Peralta, that project actually bid out twice. The first time, we didn't receive any bids. The second time that bid out, we only received one bid, which was Garcia Underground.
Okay.
What we did was, we removed some items off of the bid, items like the SWIP plan, seeding, and striping. We removed the SWIP plan because we weren't disturbing more than an acre of land, so therefore it wasn't needed. The seeding was very, very small, and at the end of the day, there's really nothing to seed. And the striping was at about $10,000, and after looking at it and speaking with the contractor, we felt that we could do that for about $400. So those were the items that were moved. In addition to that, we separated the projects out. We bid it out as one lot, however, we separated it out from the utilities to the civil part of the project, and it was 44 to 56%. So that's how we did that, and that's how we worked with Marietta to get the monies allocated.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Anything else, council? Not?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to approve.
Second that.
And we have a second, and I thank you both for moving these forward, so.
Thank you.
Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
So then, now, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, go into executive session to discuss pending litigation according to section so-and-so-and-so-and-so of the state statute.
And under the welcome music- And councillor Peralta, there was an informational item that I think we were going to hear before we went into executive session, if we could. Councillor Hahn was going to present that. I think it was just information that was presented during that forum, is that correct, councillor?
Yes, sir.
I'll remove my motion.
Okay, so we're going to 11A, Public Information Meeting Report, to report on the public information regarding the Airport Safety Improvement Project. Councillor Hahn?
So I'll go through this really quickly because I expect that we'll be discussing this at greater length, but briefly, about 85, 90 people were there, and it was about nine to one opponents with proponents. Issues covered, pro and con included, safety issues, landing flexibility, health issues, flying people out, the common welfare, master plan, cost-benefit analysis, grant issues, regionalization issues, the fixed-based operator issues, the environmental impact statement, military use, dumping, air control, fire suppression, cost of the airport, the basic assumptions that previous administrations have looked at the airport with, and what I mean by that is, many in the public feel that the prior administrations have just felt that the airport would be a good thing and move forward on it. Some discussion on, I can't read my own writing, I knew this would happen. I can't read my own writing, I, I knew this would happen. Well, I'll skip it. Other existing comparisons and safety issues with the shortened runway versus the longer economics, the disparity, the Aspenization of Taos. Public inclusiveness, frequency of flights, potential for collaborating with Taos County and other county entities. Some discussion, as I recall correctly, Mr. Bellis, I've been working so hard on this, I can't remember if we discussed this or not. Did we discuss Judge Meacham's, uh, uh, ruling back in 1991 that night? Or is that just my research, okay. So in short, that's about it. Now, I'm, I'm gonna stop there pending your and the consul's approval because when we look at, uh, 10D, I'll be addressing, uh, all of these issues as briefly as I can.
Okay, Counsel Peralta?
Make a motion, we go into executive session discussing pending litigation.
Uh, you wanna cite the, go ahead.
I'd like to, if you don't mind, it's, uh, section 10151, uh, H7 of the New Mexico statutes, which allows, um, executive session for matters concerning, um, subject to attorney-client privilege pertaining to threat or pending litigation in which the public body is or may become a participant. And this is specifically, um, with respect to over formally numbered items 10D and E. And I think they've been renumbered as E and F of, um, the current agenda.
F and G.
F and G.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
We have a second to go into executive session. Any further discussion? Not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, for the purposes of public, just inform them that, so there isn't a belief that somehow this is conspiratorial. Uh, the town has not yet been served with the lawsuit and it is only indirectly that the attorney and I have seen a copy of it. The town council did not know coming into this meeting of the lawsuit. So we would like an opportunity before they vote, as I'm sure the opposition would, for us to instruct them as to what's in the lawsuit. We're not allowed to discuss pending legal matters in public, that's why we have to do it in executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Bellis. Excuse me?
All, all discussion about this matter, any deliberation and any final vote must take place in the public. We cannot discuss or negotiate, uh, about the two matters in this session. It's strictly for legal purposes in regards to the lawsuit.
Maybe twenty minutes.
Should we sit here for hours and wait for you?
Maybe.
Hope not.
Twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes, half hour, probably realistic.
The shorter the better.
Do we have a motion to come out of executive session?
So move.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Uh, Mr. Lopez, turn to you for report.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, uh, I'll report that the, uh,
Counsel.
Counsel, upon motion and vote, when in.
Mr. Mayor, Floyd, just for the listening audience at home, could you, um, utilize the mic?
Sorry?
The, your mic, I don't think is on.
Okay. When in executive session pursuant to, um, section eight seven of, H7 of the previously cited statute, to discuss matters, um, concerning litigation that we have been advised was filed, uh, the lawsuit that was, we have been advised was filed yesterday. And I think I, um, stated the name of that lawsuit. And that, um, involved matters concerning, um, the contract, proposed contract TT 1582 with Northern Mountain Constructors, as well as resolution, proposed resolution 1443, Federal Aviation Administration Grant. Previously listed on the agenda as, uh, ele- ten item, paragraphs 10D and E. And I think they were renumbered as F and G. Or E and F, I'm not sure which.
F and G.
That, um, the litigation, um, is related to those matters that were scheduled for open meeting. Because it's threatened, well, it's actually pending litigation. Under the state statutes, we were allowed to discuss those matters in executive session. That no other matters were discussed, other than the litigation concerning those two items. And, um, that, uh, we have reconvened, um, in open session after the, um, termination of the executive session.
Do we have a motion to accept the, uh, town attorney's report?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, any further discussion? None, call for the vote.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
So now we'll go on to item F, resolution, uh, 1453, Federal Aviation Administration Grant, uh, Mr. French?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, this is resolution 1443, uh, the Federal Aviation Administration Grant for the construction of Phase One of the airport expansion with FAA. It is in the, in the amount of 5.4 million dollars.
French, turn on your mic.
I think it is on, isn't it? There, I'm, I'm live, right?
You're live.
You might just have to get a little closer.
Or, or grow a little bit. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, um, I ask for your approval to submit this grant and I will stand for any questions. The airport manager, John, and the engineers are in the audience. If you have, uh, technical questions regarding this resolution.
Regarding the resolution, counsel?
Mayor, I move for approval for discussion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, uh, I believe the chief, chief, did you have a, something that you wanted to mention?
Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Town Manager. Um, I, I would hope that I've demonstrated throughout my career being here with Taos Police Department since 2006 that I strongly support and understand my, my duties of separation of powers and that I am very cognizant about decision-making responsibility of the council and I just try to give advice as I see. Um, I have been quiet about this topic since it's been going on and I think that may have been an error. So I would like to have this opportunity to express my professional thoughts on the airport. Little bit of a background, um, in case you don't know, I started the Marine Corps in 1979, have multiple degrees from New Mexico State University. I start my 24th year of civilian law enforcement tomorrow is my anniversary. Uh, my career has been outstanding, I've had a rock, opportunity to do really incredible things. I've been part of presidential details, I've been part of major catastrophes. I have been operations section chief for a class one critical incident, which is an incident that involves federal responses. I am a teacher, instructance to command system. So the vast majority of my career has been in SWAT, emergency management, um, and operations. There's a couple things I know about people such as myself. I know that if we are in air ambulance and if there's only one airport, there's only one way of taking off. And if the weather conditions are not ideal, I know people like me will still take off. And they will crash and die. We've already had a helicopter, medical helicopter crash about a month ago. We had one last year, we had one four years ago that took a very good friend of mine. And so I know that people that have the type of mentality that I do, that come into this business, push the limits and that's just nature of what we do. I also understand how isolated Taos is. So, some gentlemen, uh, I've heard conversations talking about airports are within two hours of whichever direction. That's provided that the road is open. It's not my job to look at best case scenarios, it's my job to look at worst case scenarios. I believe Mr. Bellis heard this conversation from me last week when we're talking about the concert that's coming up on the 25th. And the promoters kept telling me that I didn't need to worry about particular topics. And I told the promoter the reason that they don't have to worry about it is because I will worry about it and I will figure out a way to resolve it. The other thing that I've tried to impress the members of the community and also to the council is that it's my job to say yes. If you have something that you want to have happen, it's my job to make that happen. And without question, provided it's constitutionally valid, I will go and work as hard as I can to make the wishes of the council be done. This is probably the only time that I will kind of flip that around and strongly ask you to listen to me when I tell you that we need that airport, we need the crossover, we need that airport to be virtually expanded as much as what you lawfully can. Simply for the fact of when there is a critical incident, I need that capability. For the second aspect of it is, for the medical crew, when they are flying people out of here, they need to be able to safely do it. Because like I said, if it's still on that verge of being safe or not safe, they will fly, that's what we do. So, from having a look in the totality of, of everything around in this community, you know, often we play what-if games, well, what if, what if all the natural gases shed off to the county? Which is a game that we had never played, but when it did happen, we actually had the answers because we played what-if. One of the what-if scenarios that we do is, what if all the roads coming into Taos are closed? And it's not that difficult to perceive. If we have landslides knocking boulders out all the time, we have this area being snowed in all the time. And so it is really conceivable that we would have no access to the Taos community except by air. And if it's not safer than land due to only one strip, those people will still try to land. And it's my duty to protect the responders as much as I can and protect the community as much as I can. And I really view this as being very much public safety concern. So I would urge you to, um, to continue with the process of upgrading the, the airport. So any questions or anything I can answer for you?
Thank you for your testimony, Chief.
Thank you, thank you very much for listening to me.
Uh, I did allow the chief to, is there any others in the audience that, Mr. Steg? Stephen?
I'd like to speak just for a moment about the safety concerns and the, the health and safety and the welfare of these medical flights. Seems to me that we can live with the airport as it is, if we have the airport, if this community has, not the airport, has the aircraft necessary to do what is needed to meet these conditions of geography, atmospherics, weather. No, no borderline, no marginal sort of flying, but somebody that wants to operate a business, flying patients to and from wherever. I think that this community can come up with a standard of aircraft necessary to meet the conditions of that airport and fly people in and out of here. That's, that to me is, is the approach that we should be taking. Is that if the primary concern, if it really is a concern, the health, safety and welfare of these medical patients, then let's get the aircraft here and let's require that those who provide the service use the aircraft that can accommodate all of these extremes of condition and, and operate out of that airport. It seems to me that's the simplest, most direct, least expensive, uh, least, um, damaging, potentially damaging aspect, um, of the, of this extension of the runway. Then you can, if you do that, then you can start to think about, it seems to me, uh, what kind of aircraft we want in here. I mean, we've talked about, um, you've heard the, the small aircraft and now we're up to thirty passenger aircraft, there's this sort of mission creep. But again, why not, why not do that? Why not require those flying individuals, people who need help, medical help, medical emergencies, whatever it is, require that, if you want to do that, um, that you meet the conditions of this place, this particular community, this particular watershed, this particular geography. Why can't we approach it from that, from that, from that point of view? Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
Back in the EIS process, my cousin who was a pilot then, and we're friends with Fred Fair, um, for the last fifty years. So we know a fair amount about, um, flying through being his friend and my dad was a pilot and stuff. Anyway, um, uh, what should have been done a long time ago is a gravel strip. Should have been put in there that's adequate length to create a relief. That should have been done a long, long time ago and it doesn't cost that much money to do that. And all it needs is in the spring, uh, it needs to be repacked, it needs to be well-built. And, um, it, I haven't done the analysis on how much it would cost, but a gravel strip that's long enough to cope with the problem is what's needed. And the advantage of a gravel strip, especially at this airport, is it's used very, very seldom. And in the winter time, if there's, on the highways, there's cars packing that concrete, uh, that asphalt all the time. But on an unused crosswind runway, you have heaving of the asphalt. And if it's not being used, it's gonna have to be packed, it could be packed with a steamroller. But all that's really needed is a gravel strip. Ask any really good pilot, that's all that's needed. And if it's built, the, a length that's adequate, it eliminates the problem of big jets coming in here, which is our biggest problem in Taos. And our biggest problem in Taos, the reason people are coming to the, to meetings when they're posted and when they're adequately, um, announced, is because we're all having problems with the cost of living here. And that's what we're really concerned about, is these big planes coming in here and, and that effect. And we can do all this, I think there's, my cousin is an engineer, he does projects all over the world, Africa everywhere. And he and I had a discussion about it, came up with approximately a million dollars is what it would cost to put in an adequate strip that would give the relief that we need. Because it's been needed all along, it really has, there's no question. Dan, what Dan has said, what everyone has said, it is needed. And we need to look into that as an alternative to this huge jet port.
Thank you, Seth.
Anyone else? Okay, so, counsel? Under discussion?
There's one man.
Oh, go ahead, sorry about that.
I would ask councils, the counselors to consider that we heard that maybe hundreds, we don't have an exact count, maybe three hundred homes just had all their value taken away because the realtor said no one is gonna buy land within the airport danger exclusion zone. What would be the value of those homes? What does it cost today in Taos? A home requires a piece of land, a sewer, a well, a house. I don't see how you can get that for less than a hundred thousand. In fact, that's very, very inexpensive, most homes are much more than that. Well, one hundred thousand times three hundred homes is thirty million dollars that's being taken from the peoples of Taos in order that we don't have to spend the money to buy a truly appropriate airport that we could make bigger when we need a bigger airport. Thank you for considering that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comment, any further discussion, counsel? If not, go ahead.
Go ahead. Mayor Protem?
Go ahead.
I insist.
You wanna flip a coin?
Mr. Mayor, I, I think that we've looked at this.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think that we've looked at this. I think we've spent 30 years analyzing the reasons why we need to have this airport. And there is no hidden agendas here. We're not trying to do anything other than provide for the safety and, and economic development of our community and allowing for it to be prosperous for our children. And, and that's what I've always looked at in this. And that's the representation that I've done to this community and, and the feedback that I've gotten that we need to do this. So that's my position and I'm ready to vote.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As many of you know, prior, well during the election, this issue came up twice. And at that time I stated I had reservations about the airport. And JR's reporting is very excellent reporting in the Taos news last week, even though I don't agree with everything JR writes. I told JR that I'd spent about, prior to the campaign or prior to the election, about two minutes thinking about the airport. So I've been on a very steep learning curve and I felt incumbent to really research this project from a holistic perspective, to consult with proponents, opponents, experts, my spouse. So before I started my analysis, my analysis of this airport expansion project, I'd like to take a moment to thank Mayor Dan Barone and his spirit of inclusiveness and openness to hearing public comment on an issue that's been in process for decades. Previous administrations would probably have not allowed such access and discourse. As from their perspective, the comment, the public comment period ended some time ago. Six months ago, the citizens of Taos spoke overwhelmingly of their desire for open, honest and transparent government. Today serves, today serves as an example of our commitment to that mandate under Mayor Barone's direction. I think we all feel that way. I have no doubt about that. I'd like to thank my fellow council members for all of their hard work in considering this issue and all previous councils and administrations. And we're going back 30 years now. And all those staff members, those, those that are here, those that have been before, some who've passed on, they've all put time, effort and energy into this. I would be remiss were I not to mention the many citizens, both proponents and opponents of the airport expansion project who have taken the time to participate in our democratic town government. Furthermore, access and information was and has been distributed in an objective and fair manner to all inquiries by our trusted servants, the town manager, the department heads. I'm very grateful to manager Rick Bellis. I'm also exceedingly grateful to department head John Thompson, Francisco Espinosa, Martha Perkins and countless others for their professional and in my opinion equitable manner. We're human beings. We're tired. We say the wrong thing at the wrong time. Sometimes we're short. Sometimes we're eloquent. We're human beings. But I feel that these people that I've mentioned deserve a lot of credit for suiting up and showing up and, and doing their best on a daily basis. I'd also like to express my appreciation to Joaquin Chavez, who despite his workload at Taos Aviation Services as the fixed based operator or FBO out there, he's taken the time to not only answer citizen inquiries, no matter how that citizen felt about the airport, but helped to empower neighborhood associations with flight pattern accountability and recourse measures. It was Joaquin, an ex-airforce pilot who at our forum a little over a week ago, gave citizenry the appropriate process for registering air traffic complaints. It was Joaquin Chavez who, in a very fair and equitable, equitable manner, even though he's very much an airport expansion proponent, who has really encouraged everyone, whether they're pro or con, to approach him. Our democracy, though often a muddled process works, we've seen that through this process, haven't we? We've seen it in other examples. Regardless of the decision made here today, I encourage all of us citizens to continue to be involved and let your voice be heard. You might be interested in knowing that it was Mr. Bellis who suggested to me that the council appoint through due process and proper procedure, an opponent to the airport project to sit on the airport advisory board. It was a department head's suggestion that the same be done with the, what I'm going to call the airport construction board. Now I may not have that board names right, but there is a board that oversees the construction. And this department head suggested to me that we actually ask one of the opponents to sit on this board to help guide and direct this project. Indeed, this administration additionally has appointed to our planning and zoning commission, a planning and zoning member from the county who lives in the vicinity of the airport. This is fostering not only a spirit of greater collaboration, but I think it's become really apparent to me that this administration responds to your concerns. We really truly want to listen, hear and be appropriate spokespeople for your wishes. Together, unless you fade away, we can forge the accountability measures that you deem appropriate. If the people lead, the leaders will follow. That being said, here is my analysis. Health. Currently, the airport transfers distressed patients all over the region. Currently, there is a 94% availability for transfer. The Crosswinds project would increase this percentage, a positive argument for expansion, but serving a limited and small percentage of population. Safety. During construction, the shortened existing runway will have to be carefully managed as an increased danger will be posed during construction. And by the way, that existing runway will be shortened by 420 feet. Post-construction, there will be greater landing and takeoff flexibility. Considering that few, if any accidents were reported due to the condition of the current runway in our past, expansion will improve accident rates only negligibly. Welfare. It is estimated that 30 temporary employees may be hired as a result of the two-year construction project. None in the long term. You might be interested in noting that once this resolution succeeds, we need to visit the next agenda item, which is Northern Mountains bid. Hopefully at that time, we'll get a harder fix on short-term employment. Fire. Fire is a real threat. We all know it. It impacts all of us. Analysis indicates that an extended airport might augment a minor local response, but that it is unlikely that slurry in large amounts will be stored here. And even if that were the case, it would take 24 hours to mix and transport it locally. The large slurry tankers stationed in Colorado, Wyoming and California will still be flown in with a 24-hour response time. Therefore, time savings in fire response, in my opinion, is negligible. Cost-benefit analysis. Though the FAA waived this requirement, the state of New Mexico's Department of Transportation Research indicates that there will be no significant economic impact on town or county gross revenues or gross receipts taxes as a result of airport expansion. It is interesting for me to note that not one business in or out of state has contacted me or town government, with the exception of one charter service, inquiring about relocating their business at an expanded airport. Not one. It is so tempting, isn't it? To live off the federal tit? We invest $300,000, we get 22 million. Wow. We'd be a fool not to take it. But that's, that makes me want to look at the long view. That wants, that requires me to look at recurring annual maintenance costs. And as it stands right now, the town of Taos revenues at less than $40,000 a year with expenses of 140,000 a year is running a deficit in a budget that we are still trying feverishly to manage and control. I project that with this expansion, our revenues may double and our expenses will probably go up to close to $200,000 a year. Our airport deficit increases with airport expansion. Some have mentioned that regionalizing the airport with buy-in from local communities might diminish the operating deficit. Might diminish the operating deficit. Yet none, yet none of our community partners, with the exception of Taos County, have offered their help. To be fair, we at the town haven't asked. Besides, if we do build it, will there be any incentive for our neighbors, in addition to Taos County, to join with us and defray some of this deficit spending? Not only are we looking at deficit spending with the town, but if we extrapolate that to the federal government, we all moan and groan about that. Well, here is a prime example, ladies and gentlemen, of how deficit spending happens on a federal, state and local level. Gee, 300,000 to 1.2 million and we'll give you 22. Well, that's how it starts. So where is your heart really at? Some have suggested, including myself, that we bring the FBO, the fixed based operator in-house to defray costs to increase revenues. Reliable sources state that expertise and accountability could become an issue if FBO business is conducted by the town of Taos at the airport. So bringing the FBO in-house may or may not be a viable alternative. There are serious questions. The town and county's own recently completed economic development plan reports that the airport will have a negligible impact on our financial well-being at best. Master plan. Again, though the FAA waived this requirement for property use outside the fence, the neighborhood associations, which we've heard some about tonight, have begun their collaboration with the county and now with the suit with the town. And I totally encourage this because it's with that kind of collaboration that we may exact appropriate safeguards, though it's just getting started. So although from the town's perspective, we may, we may want to get out of this suit just as quickly as possible, I believe that Mr. Bellis actually has a plan in mind to help foster community dialogue about this. There, on my part, I think on Mayor Barone and the others that sit up here and our town attorney and clerk, we want to do what's right. This truly is a 50-50 issue. The grant. Some have proposed that if we deny this grant application, it will, will preclude our ability to apply for and receive other grants. I have found this not to be the case. To wit, in 1991, when this airport subject was before this council, the grant application was pulled. Well, here we are, decades perhaps, but here we are looking at a similar grant today. I've talked with others in state and federal government who say that our denial of this project should not preclude our ability to apply for other grants. Other citizens' concerns. I went through that list from the forum very quickly the other night, I mean the, an hour ago. I want to address some of those a little bit more specifically. And this is based now on my research. The environmental impact statement. The formal EIS states that there will be no significant environmental impact. Some have stated that it must be supplemented as it is outdated, perhaps a prudent action. But the original to me, to me, seemed fairly exhaustive with 400 public comments and 800 pages of testimony and responses. Neighborhood associations in collaboration with the town of Taos and Taos County may help to rectify some of these lingering concerns. Citizen import is huge. Mr. Bellis's door is always open. The county now is getting quickly up to speed on what this airport means. If you go silent now, we all lose. A gentleman in the audience said, you know, someone's going to walk out of here tonight with blood on our hands. That should not be the case. If we talk to each other and give each other due deference and respect, if we listen to each other and look for the middle road, I think we'll be okay. Military flights. The current statutes prevail. That's the latter from 20 years ago, Bonnie or so. They can be further augmented by citizens contacting, as Mr. Chavez pointed out to us, Senator Udall's office directly. Remember what Joaquin said? You know, you can call me at the airport, you can call John at the airport, you can call Fritz, you can call Gabe on the county commission, but you know what's really going to make a difference? You can call the Air Force, but you know what's really going to make a difference? Call Senator Udall. He has all those contacts. The Air Force states to me that they expect no appreciable increase in flights. Let me state that again. No appreciable increase in flights. Retired Air Force controllers tell me that, and, and these were people who dealt with flight transgressions in Oklahoma and Kansas where Air Force flights left approved areas. It was his job to actually investigate these transgressions and he, and he said they take it very seriously. Pilots are seriously reprimanded when they leave their flight patterns, their approved flight patterns. Again, my research. Flight frequency. Reliable sources states that flights, flights will increase, but negligibly, minimally. Dumping. Reliable sources state that although it may have occurred in the past, dumping is not allowed and when happens, can only happen in the imminent event of a crash with strict consequences and accountability. That's what my research indicates. There is no dumping, except in the event of an imminent crash. Disparity. The aspenization of Taos. From my analysis, as a statistics guy, as a social worker, as a businessman, when I look at our economic development... look at our economic development study recently completed, when I look at the 40 years that I've lived here, I have to come to the conclusion that the aspenization of Taos is not anticipated due to airport expansion. The fact is that a huge disparity already exists. This problem must be addressed by our town and county government collaborating on affordable housing. It is not, in my opinion, an airport issue. My son is a school teacher here in this town. He has tenure. He has an excellent credit rating. He has a healthy savings account, and he cannot afford to buy a home in this town. Now, if a teacher can't afford to buy a home in this town, we're in big, big trouble. But I do not attribute this malaise to airport expansion. And I don't anticipate that the disparity between rich and poor in our community will increase at a greater rate than it already is. My conclusions. As you can see, as I've stated many times, this has been a 50-50 venture. If this venture investment of our community resources moves forward, I hope and will do everything in my power to assure that it succeeds with appropriate accountability. But please bear in mind that only one in five venture investments succeeds. So the argument comes down to my own tipping point, to my own insights as a small businessman and a social worker. I feel that we must build on and invest in our strengths. Is our community's strength an airport or a sequoia? Farming or glitz? Sustainability or risk? Small, locally homegrown businesses or chain stores? Taos is unique. That's why people come here. Therefore, I would humbly propose to my fellow counselors and mayor that we not pursue the FAA grant opportunity and rather invest that $300,000 to $500,000 in what we're good at. Invest in our strengths, sequoias, farming, small business, sustainability. And we, if we invest that half million dollars in a sequoia revitalization, utilizing the Rachel Prince sequoia revitalization proposal, that could, pending our new grant writers' efforts, afford us the opportunity to revitalize our sequoias, employing just as many people for perhaps a longer period of time than the proposed airport expansion project. This in turn would augment our own sustainability, farming, and small business endeavors. Would this not be a more prudent investment? I have to ask myself as a citizen investor, am I going for pie in the sky or something concrete? Well, I'm a conservative investor. I want to go for something concrete. If we could become the Venice of the West, will we not only improve our own quality of life and that of our children, but naturally attract visitors who will drive up our beautiful gorge to see the gorgeousness of the Taos Valley? I feel we must build on our strengths, not wishful thinking. In the past, the town has seemed to presume that if we build it, they will come, that regionalization will become an economic driver, that a regional airport will become an economic driver. That may be so, but my analysis indicates that that will not be the case. I feel that we need to invest in the community at large, not a select few, despite heart-wrenching and heartbreaking and tearful circumstances. When I ask myself, are you willing, Fritz? I mean, what is a life worth? Is a life worth 24 cents, $24, $2,400, $24,240? You're with me on that. There's no way you can put a cost-benefit analysis on a life. But in those rare circumstances where someone may die, I have to ask myself, are you willing to pay that price, Fritz? What if it's your wife Tina? My wife Tina has MS. Many of you know her. She walks with a cane. She tips over three or four times a day. What happens if it's her? And I need a large fixed-wing aircraft to get her up to life support at UNM? What happens if I pay that price personally? Am I willing to do that? I hope I don't, but I know I'm going to meet someone that does, and it's going to be a hard time, and we're both going to cry. The airport is a public good. Sequoias are a public good. Which serves more? So with my beautiful spouse Tina, here is my very dramatic, cold, objective decision. Even if it is she, the one who suffers and dies as a result of the decision we make here today, which serves the greater good? The welfare of the many outweighs the welfare of the few. I propose that we deny the FAA grant and invest it in our greater good. Thank you for your time and patience.
I have, I have something also that I wrote, and I can read it before or I can read it after.
Go ahead, Counselor Cantu.
Anyway, I just wanted to say thank you, Councilman Han. When I was running for office, I always said he was thorough, and I wasn't kidding, was I? Anyway, we have very different approaches and very different language, so in a nutshell, I'm going to read what my feelings were on this. The golden rule of the past, do unto others as you have them, would have them do unto you, has been replaced by the new golden rule. He with the gold rules. Approximately 30 years ago, the Santa Fe New Mexican ran an article entitled, "They Kept the Buildings and Moved the People." Santa Fe, known as fantase these days, is a shell of what we once knew it to be. The rhythm of life was a familiarity birthed out of isolation that made our state unique and enchanting. Once upon a time, there was a little town called Vale, one called Aspen, another Steamboat Springs, all in Colorado, another Park City in Utah, examples of, "They kept the buildings and moved the people." Billionaire playgrounds now resort towns changed forever. Those who can't compete financially are disempowered and displaced. This is my home. This is my opportunity to say no, not the way it's being proposed. This is getting too big, Taos is getting too big to handle growth intelligently if affluent people with money come in charging in herds. We have a responsibility to those who would become displaced. We do not want Taos to lose what charm it is clinging to. Taos is not what it once was. I have heard the pros and cons of the people. Although many are not living in the city limits, they are tausenios nonetheless. I am all for safety and smart planning, but not the way it is currently being proposed. And many feel there are, there is a hidden agenda here. The proposed size, size of the runway speaks volumes. Though regionalization is the plan, right now, we have a municipal airport. We have a 20-year-old master plan of the airport, 20 years and in desperate need of upgrading, but I will not be bullied by the dangling carrot of a million dollars before a master plan has been redesigned. We do need an updated environmental impact statement. We now have Rio Grande del Norte and a new owner of Taoski Valley. There are rumors of the plans on proposed changes at Taoski Valley, plans that are for visitors to the ski valley, plans to stay up there and not to even come down to Taos. Are, are we catering to them? Plans for 30-seater planes to bring passengers to ski in Taos on Taos's generosity? To quote an old cliche, "We are placing the cart before the horse." No current airport master plan. Opposition, opposition isn't a small local minority. There are more opposed than are for this expansion. This councilwoman wants what the people want. Federal money, state money, by any title, is still the people's money, taxpayers' money. I am outraged that the people's money offered is not for affordable housing. As I drive around Taos, and I encourage you all to take notice that we are becoming a town of trailers. Again, "They kept the buildings and moved the people." There is no excuse for homelessness in America. There really isn't. The rich get richer on the town's nickel. Look what happened at Ski Rio. And another example is the same that's happening at the spaceport in Truth or Consequences. Taxpayers footing the bill for the privilege. I'm sorry, I am not sorry for my decision, which will be no. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody for, that's been in attendance tonight, both pro and opposition. And one aspect that I've completely, completely left out of this equation for me has been the personal aspect. Almost every decision I make, I try to make solely based on what I see as fact. And as many of you are lifelong members of this community, you knew my dad. Was a well-respected businessman, was a banker here in Taos for over 35 years, was president of First Community Bank, born and bred Highlands High, Highlands, he was a Central Catholic graduate, Highlands College graduate, came back to Taos, raised his family. In 2001, was diagnosed with renal failure. It's been said that one individual can be lucky enough to get the opportunity to get a kidney transplant on the cuff. When that time is called, either you answer the call and you get where you need to go, you receive your kidney, and you move on with life. My dad had two opportunities to receive a kidney. Both times couldn't leave from this airport, despite the fact that he had two willing pilots, one of them being Pavel Lukas, to take him there. My dad passed away March 29th, 2004, despite the fact that my mother was a city counselor at that time. So you can't sit here and tell me, what's a life worth? Because my father's grandkids and me have grown up without his father. I was 21 years old when my dad passed away. Now, I don't know about you all, but I know one thing about Taos is that we rely heavily on family. Anybody that's born here, bred here, is from here and rooted here. When I ran for office, so many of my neighbors in La Loma, because that's where I'm from, could recount the times of me breaking windows, riding my bike, and overall generally, just being a kid within this community. Now, so many things have changed. I wouldn't let my son ride down the street on his bike alone, not today. But I do know that if I have the opportunity to save one life, and if this airport solely were to exist on safety alone, then I would base my decision solely on safety alone. But so many other aspects are entangled into this, and true economic development does rely on that airport. Knock Mr. Bacon for what you will, but here's an individual willing to put a ton of money into a resort that by the owner's account was about to go under. Taking a gamble, he himself. Adriana Blake herself said it. I would never engage in another business that solely lived and died by the weather. Now we have an individual here who's making the investment into this community, and the only thing I've ever heard is it's going to be Baconville, Millionaireville. We lost a project, and lo and behold, I don't know if the community knows this, New Mexico Ready had a project willing to come to Taos that would have created 180 high-paying, high-wage jobs, technical field, a Google company, that would have created a data center. They chose Moriarty, New Mexico, over Taos. They cited two reasons. One was that airport and the lack of uncertainty in it. Number two was what Mr. Reyes said today, the lack of uncertainty with regards to electric rates. Two huge issues that face this community. So when I've sat back and watched my mom mull over issues such as this airport, and she's been off this council now for 10-plus years, and I'm a second-generation counselor, a lifelong tausenio. I plan on either my ashes being spread here or my body being buried here. I don't plan on ever leaving this community. That mountain calls me home. No matter where I go, where I've been, as soon as I turn that horseshoe, I know I'm home. I want my kids to feel that way. I want my son to come back from four years of college and be able to make a living here so I can raise and see my grandkids. So with that, Mr. Mayor, you will not see me turn down this airport. And I respect both sides. And I ask in return, you respect the decision that I make that you all have entrusted me with, because I have both sides of pressure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. We do have a second. Any further discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Han?
No.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu? Mayor Barone?
Yes. And again, I just want to make an analogy, you know, years ago, the pinyon tree in our community, there was a moratorium putting on the, put on the pinyon tree, "Don't touch it." And look what happened to that pinyon tree. It died because of the lack of the water, because the bugs took over. We don't want Taos to die. We want it to be vibrant. We want people to come. We want them to share what we have in our community. So again, thank you.
Counselors? We have the next item on the agenda, which is the, item G, Contract TT 1582 with Northern Mountain Contractor, Mr. Espinoza.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
That one doesn't turn on for you?
Two mics.
Two mics, Mr. Espinoza.
I don't know how to use this thing. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is approval of contract TT-15-82 with Northern Mountain Constructors, that is a local contractor, for the construction of the airport in the amount of $5,000,31,48 plus the grocery receipts. And this is contingent upon funding from FAA, and it is for the construction of Phase 1 of Runway 1230 at the Taos Regional Airport. The contract is for 150 calendar days. Liquidated damages are set at $5,000 per day. And with that, I will try and answer any questions and ask for your approval.
And French, I just want to kind of, during the bid process, you know, was the bid that came in substantially lower than what was, I guess, recognized by the firm that put it up?
Mr. Mayor, the, it was the engineer's estimate. It, it was, there's a letter, a letter of recommendation in your file from Armstrong, they are the consultants for the airport. The, the second bid that was submitted was disqualified because they didn't have the proper permitting. But to answer your question, Mayor, yes, there was, there were, there were items in the, in the bid that were 19 times higher than the local contractor. And the only thing I could attribute that to is the availability of water for compaction and dust suppression. So it's, it's, the, the project was bid out with four, four different lots, and if you, if you go through that, you'll see the, the difference from one contractor to the next. Things like seating, that was like 19 times higher than the local contractor, mobilization, traffic control, so yes.
So there was a significant savings?
Yes.
All right.
Counselor?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I believe that we needed to have some contingents on that approval. I will second it, but, Mr. Bellis, if you could help me with the contingencies.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, pro temp. The contract is drafted by the town attorney, indicates that three things, which we want, one is safeguards for the town. One is that the award is contingent upon the continued availability of funding, not just in the current phase, but any future phase. The second is that it's contingent upon all permits and approvals being in place, and that should there either be a denial of a permit at some future date, or should there be litigation that the approval should be overturned at some date, that the town would be held harmless and the contract would be released at that point. And trying to, I think that covers both of the points. However, I, I think the third point I did want to make is that the bidder had 90 days from the time the bids were accepted for it to be executed. We anticipate, obviously, contracting immediately. However, the contractor has to receive a notice to proceed from the town before the actual work can commence. And we're presuming, under your guidance, that the notice to proceed would not be issued until all the approvals and the funding were secured.
Mr. Mayor, I ask that the motion be amended to...
Just one small correction, Mr. Mayor. 60 days from the date the bids were open, within which to approve the contract. So that would be on or before October 27th.
If not, it has the, the contractor has the ability to withdraw his bid, correct? If we do not grant it within that period of time?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask that the motion be amended to include those terms as stated by the manager.
Mr. Mayor, that's okay with my motion.
So we do have a motion on the floor and a second. Further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I am really happy that a local contractor has won this bid, but because of my previous statements, I will be, I'll reserve judgment, you can probably guess as to how I'm going to go. It'd only be fair to do that, but I want the contractor to know whether I go up or down is, is not, whether I vote yes or no, is not a reflection on Northern Mountains' expertise. I hope I made that clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, call for the vote.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu? Councilmember Hahn?
No.
Thank you, thank you, French. Again, I want to thank all the people that had the input, thank everybody from the airport staff, everybody that had input from the public. That's, you know, that's a process. So again, thank you. So we'll go ahead and move on to item H, Contract TT 1581 with Garcia Underground, Mr. Espinoza.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. Contract TT-15-81 with Garcia Underground in the amount of $658,116.84 plus GRT for the construction of Camino de la Merced.
Move approval. Motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, she's second, no, I'm sorry. Is your mic not on again? Yeah, it's on.
We have a second by Counselor Kuntu. Any further discussion? Not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
So go on to item I, Resolution 1441, Grant Application for Rural Transportation Services. Mr. Espinoza?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a grant application for fiscal year 2015 and 2016 for continued operations of the Town of Taos Chili Line Public Transit Services. And I ask for your approval. It is in the amount of $423,440, with the town's match at $287,360. And again, it's for federal year 15 and 16.
Okay.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second for purposes of...
Discussion? Discussion?
Mr. Bellis, is this within budget?
Absolutely, yes. My apologies. Absolutely, yes, that's where we got our figures from.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go on to J, Resolution 1446, Waiver of Immediate Family Member. Mr. Bellis, and before I go there, French, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, French.
I know you're probably a little late for supper now, but appreciate you...
Well, just hitting the table. If you get there in time, it'll still be hot.
Yeah, my wife will be contacting each and every one of you.
To invite us over?
thanking us that, thanking us that you're not out at midnight.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Bellis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, item H. As most of you are aware, when it re, when a contract involves negotiating with a family member of a staff member, we're required to come before council for approval. This has gone through a bidding process, and the judge has forwarded his recommendations to us, and that is that we contract with Mr. Fambro. And I apologize for the delay in getting this done. The judge was out for a while, and then we had a new procurement officer, and we didn't know how to quite handle this one. But it is before you, and we'd like to get this done as soon as possible so that we can get the interim municipal judge paid. It's my understanding our second municipal judge has withdrawn at this time.
Okay.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Thank you. So we'll go on to Town Manager's Report, Public Information Meeting Report, report, we've already taken care of that, sorry about that. We'll go to item B, Status Report, Status Report on 114 Civic Plaza Drive, and this is just a report.
Yes, it is, Mr. Mayor. We sort of wanted some guidance on this, and you have a copy of a letter prepared. Steve, can you and Julie come up front? And our concern here is twofold. One is that, yes, the, the amount of damage exceeded the money set aside for doing the roof repairs, so we would have to juggle our budget around. The, the building has a number of additional problems. UNM is asking that we actually move some of their staff to one of the rooms in this building, and this is not an investment in which we get our money back, so to speak. One of the things that former town attorney, Mr. Caldwell, thought that we really needed to do is that before we entered into leases, the law really requires that we demonstrate that we're receiving a benefit of equal value, or that we are renting competitively, at least against fair market values, in order to avoid difficulties with the anti-donation problem. So we really need to get updated appraisals on all our properties, particularly if we're renting and maintaining them. And this, at first glance, really started to become more of a, is it worth the investment considering the value of the building? But we don't have a value for the building. So the question is, it's $4,000 to $5,000 to go ahead and get the appraisal? Do we spend money that we would have spent on doing the repairs in order to make a real, valid cost-benefit decision? Which in the end, it might very well be that it's tough to say something other than to UNM, "Well, you know, it's just not worth, we'll let you out of the lease, it's not worth our putting in $250,000 into a building for $17,000." It's 17?
17.
$17,000 a year in rent. Or maybe they have a desire to take it over. The difficulty that it doesn't become simply black and white is we also have the municipal court currently in that building. However, there had been discussion amongst staff, we have not had this discussion with the judge, that in a lot of municipalities, municipal court is held in the council chambers. And I guess I would just ask if there's any questions at this time, or the council had any specific direction that it would like to go. We're also proposing to get an appraisal of the former police building for a number of reasons. One of which is we actually entered into a month-to-month agreement with the Office on Aging, State Office on Aging, and if we don't fix this building and address the concerns that UNM has, they feel that there's mold, we would want to test for that beyond the repairs. We don't particularly feel that there is mold, however, there's a high likelihood that there is asbestos in the building, and UNM is reflecting a concern that if it's going to continue to lease the building, it would like that cleaned up, which the testing alone, never mind the bill for the remediation, is probably going to be at least of the same value as, I guess it's probably floor tiles, since these buildings are all built during the same time, and we don't know in regards to the ceilings.
All right. Mr. Mayor, if I could, real quick, Rick, you asked for a recommend, well, just, I guess, guidance. And what I had, you know, always kind of tossed up in the air with regards to the judges' chambers, to still have that little ability for security or whatnot, and being that the PD is right next door, what about the executive conference room inside Town Hall, which already has originally, what used to be Town Hall, has that now roll-up, pass-through kitchen-type looking window, or roll-down shade right as you walk and you hit the dead end of the, of the hall going to the executive offices? What's the likelihood of putting the judges' chambers inside that room and the reception area being that roll-up window that sits there so that we technically have everything under the roof of, of City Hall, with the exception, obviously, of council chambers? But is, is that a likelihood, if we can move the judge into, into that area? And plus, he'd be right next to the PD, and no likelihood of our officers saying that they got hung up at the office to not make their court cases?
Councilman, $250,000 will buy a lot of remodeling.
Mr. Bellis, I, again, I would not, you know, there might still be opportunities with UNM on this 114 Civic Plaza Drive. I, you know, I think just having a conversation with them, I know that, I think, just give them the opportunity. I don't know exactly what their plans are, I don't know if they've come up with any, but I did have a brief conversation with Kate, and she would like that opportunity, so I, you know, maybe they have something in the works that might work. You know, at first I saw those pictures, I was going to say, "Did you take this in the winter? Is there snow on the roof?" But I just teasing, it looks like there's snow in the way it's waved and stuff, but...
That's, if I, I'm sorry.
It's all right, go ahead.
We have sort of discussed...
I think that mic, for some reason, is not on. Oh, now it is.
In general, other possibilities. One is indeed to do the appraisal, see, because we don't want to spend good money after bad. I did get a second estimate for just doing the foam portion of the roof, which is what those photos are, and that came in at $112,000 versus $182,000 to do the entire roof. The entire roof we could possibly, or the rest of the roof, we could live with for two or three years with a projection that lets, keep our fingers crossed. We know that building has serious issues, in that it also has no ADA-compliant toilets, those that are in there are probably from the 60s. There's, we'd have to replace the HVACs, pardon me, the swamp coolers and the venting on top. So it's, it depends on how much money you want to put into it at this point to keep UNM happy. If they're willing to do, I mean, there's, it needs to be discussed, I believe, you know, it's, but it's going to be pricey at any level, but to explore possibilities rather than just saying, "No," you know, it's, it's a little too, too dicey at this point, I think.
I think we'd need to explore all the possibilities and bring back some...
Well, if I may, Mayor, I've talked at length with Mario Suazo and a couple of conversations with Dr. O'Neill. They, they want to stay in that building because it's adjacent to their other activities here, and it's also got the computer and telephone connectivity in it now. They've got probably six people working in there full-time, it's about 4,000 square feet that they rent. They also have some student activity out of there. So that's their interest in wanting to stay there, because I asked them, like, why wouldn't you just get out of the lease and go find space somewhere else? And so those are the reasons for them wanting to stay in that location. I think they are reluctant to pitch into any costs because they see themselves as tenants, and they've already helped out with the tenant improvement, and I think they're reluctant to go there again. So that's what Mario Suazo, and I texted him, I was going to let him know that this topic came up, but it happened kind of quickly here. So that's kind of their approach that they want. They have issues with some staffing and the leaking roof, they're concerned about mold, although we don't have any indication that there is mold in there, it's just a leaky My concern, I share the concern Julie has, that if we put that much money into that building, we might be throwing good money after bad. The building's in really sad shape. And the, and the biggest thing in my mind is the judges' chambers. They also need two administrative office areas, they have two staff in there that work there full-time, so they would need office space as well. So the training room is what I think Councilmember Gonzalez was referring...
So the training room is what I think Councilmember Gonzalez was referring to in Town Hall, is large, and that could be used, this space here could be used as well, so...
Well, that conference room, the conference training room is bigger than his current chambers, isn't it?
I believe it is, yes, sir.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
And that is, could we give thought to possibly getting an appraisal for that building and selling it?
Yeah.
Do you know if that original building is a modular building?
Yeah, that's why you hear the hollow floors.
Personally, I think the land is, not having the appraisal, but the land is probably worth more than anything there, it's .88 acres.
And, Mr. Mayor, that's another reason I want to mention that, is Jake Caldwell and I had taken direction from the council that we were unhappy with the current situation in regards to the parking lots. And there is interest in doing a potential swap for one of our major lots, for that property, but then also the police building, if we were interested in doing that. So that's one reason I would like to get appraisals on both of those. The other thing is that we had $100,000 put in, the budget, and if council indulge me for a minute, in regards to the roof for the Family and Youth Center, and the majority of that money has since gone to other things, so we're back to zero. And we seem to be having these problems that we're never going to build up enough money to make some of these complete renovations. The one thing I do appreciate that Steve brought forward, was the, and Brian, was the idea of taking some of that money and going out and getting an appraisal on the financial side, but getting a structural analysis on the other side, so that we know what we're in for. Because right now, we've got our staff increasingly tied up on just being the little Dutch boy in the dyke, plugging holes, and never making any progress on our, whether, now certainly on the Family and Youth Center, anything we need to do on there is worth it. But when we look at some of these other problems, that we're not doing a public service, we're not getting a positive revenue stream, that we're losing money and subsidizing that every month, that just doesn't seem to make sense, that that's a pattern that's going to improve as time goes forward, particularly as the mayor pro tem says, when some of these are modular or patchwork in construction.
So the recommendation from staff would be to get an appraisal?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
We have bids already, so we can move on that fairly quickly. And then, once we get a contract for an appraiser, it will take four to six weeks to get their findings, their appraisal.
I have also asked for the, an appraisal, estimates also for, to do the appraisal on the old PD. So the ones that I do have were, for estimates, are for 1014 Civic Plaza Drive. And there's three of those...
We can get appraisals, or quotes for appraisals for both properties fairly quickly, and then four to six weeks after our selection, we can well have the results.
Okay. Council, this is actually just a status report, and I don't, we won't act on it, but I, the recommendation for staff, I think, is a good recommendation, and I think you guys should bring it back, you know, with those appraisals.
The one concern is there's pressure from the staff of UNM.
Again, as we move forward, you know, you're going to be, I would recommend that you work coincide...
I was talking with Mario about 20 minutes ago.
Okay, work with them, see what they're presenting, or what, and at the same time, either way, we need the appraisal.
Okay.
So, but again, whether we work with them or somebody else, we need that appraisal. So I think work with them as we move forward.
Yes, sir.
All right?
Thank you.
So, next one is, was there any good direction?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Julie.
So on item C, 2016-2020 Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, discussion regarding a special meeting, Mr. Bellis?
Mayor, just permission from the council, because it diverges from our published annual calendar, that we would schedule a special meeting on September 11th, 2014, at 9:00 a.m. in these chambers to consider, hopefully, a sole matter of the 2016, 2020 Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan. It was originally scheduled for tonight's meeting, along with a number of other items. However, we did not want to push our luck to see if we could break that one o'clock deadline again. So we're trying to spread your workload out a little simpler.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor?
With this item, Rick, is there any way that we can move this to the following week? I'll be in Dallas for Naleo's Policy Institute on infrastructure.
I'll defer to the finance director, but it's my understanding, because of the due date on this, that we've got very little leeway.
We got to turn it in for, to the 16th, we actually asked for an extension, because I'm working on it with Rick and the department, since Miranda's out at a different department. So we got the extension, it's due the 16th. I had to deliver a hard copy, so I was trying to get it all done for Monday.
Then I guess, is that something I can participate in via phone?
Yeah, we would set up a conference call, and we definitely want to have this information to you as much in advance as possible, so you can review it. And I think it'd be a good idea if Marietta and I give you some written comments, so you don't have to spend a lot of time going through 20 priorities that are backburner items.
That'll work. Okay.
And Marietta, how long do you expect this meeting to take?
Hopefully not too long, it's just pretty simple, well, I'll be working here last year, but it's just going to be more of a summary, and it will show the top five projects are the really main concern that are with ICIP that we send in to the state, maybe the five, first five, the top five. I mean, you do have a choice, though, to look at them all and see, but that's what, we're gonna try to get that hopefully out to you by tomorrow, as soon as we can, we need to do some more on some of the ones that you have. So, and then if you just call me with questions, if you have anything to ask me, we're not going to give you all detail of everything, we're just gonna give you a summary. So I don't think it should take longer than now.
I apologize. Apologize for the delay, but in the past, it's sort of been the large capital road, airport, equipment sort of thing. But throughout the past three or four months, a number of you have supported ideas such as the Park Master Plan, or tree replacement, or safety replenishment, or support of the old county courthouse. We didn't have, for example, replacement police cars. And I should mention that, I'm proud to announce that we did purchase two new police cars, and that we were awarded to a local bidder here in town. So, some progress there. And low bid on top of it. But we wanted this to really be a comprehensive idea for the public of all the things we need to fund, and not just our four or five priorities we're going to ask the legislature for.
And the reason I'm kind of asking how long it would take is, we do have, I have a meeting that we got set up with some people that are coming in from out of town, and it was scheduled at 10 o'clock, and I don't know if an hour is going to be enough time, or maybe we can move the meeting to 8:30, and get us an hour and a half, if that's okay with staff and council?
Unfortunately, we're back to the 72-hour requirement.
I think we can do it. I mean, unless, if we get that information out to you tomorrow, and any of the newer council members have any questions, it's pretty much similar to the one that we did last year. Most of the departments didn't change their projects, they just moved them to a different year, and we probably have added several, you know, a few more. So I think we can do it. I can maybe send you last year's, just so that you can see the format and what's in there, if that would help you out a little bit before we get the actual real one for this year.
And I, Marietta, during our budget, did we kind of review part of this, too?
Um...
Before we moved priorities?
I don't think we reviewed the ICIP, we just did the current CIP projects, we just did that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd ask the question of the council, or legal counsel and clerk, there's no reason, do we have to have the 72-hour notice on a work session as well?
Yes, it's still a notice of quorum.
Okay.
It's still a special meeting.
All right. Okay, so then...
I believe I need a vote to schedule the meeting.
No, no, it's already scheduled.
It's already scheduled.
Well, we went ahead and scheduled it, but if we're...
Is it on?
Yes, no, council?
Yes.
I would say it makes you feel better, Mr. Manager, there's no problem giving a vote.
As long as the mayor called the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, okay. So then we'll go to matters and reports from the mayor, appointment to Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. Mr. Bellis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. One of the members we appointed originally, Tina, and I apologize, I can't remember her name, who was the general manager for the Monte Segredo, was transferred up to Colorado, so there was an opening. And the members of the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board had recommended Lori Moreau, who I believe in 2009 through 2011 had been in there, she is now the general manager of the Sagebrush, and had previously worked at a number of other hotel locations, including the Monte Segredo. And so we would ask if the mayor's recommendation would be approved by council.
Counsel?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve, and there was a recommendation, well...
Do we have a second to that?
Second.
We do, so under discussion, we did have a recommendation, Mr. Bellis, about adding two members to that board, so...
Yeah, we'll have to draft that and bring that back.
Okay. So, okay, call for the vote.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Yes.
So then item B, North Central Regional Transit District, discussion consideration, possible action regarding authorizing the establishment of a date for a public hearing to receive public input and provide information with regards to consideration of the town at Taos, applying for membership for the North Central Regional Transit District, which is the NCRTD, or the Blue Bus, and appointing a member and an alternate to represent the town thereon. And council, this is the Blue Bus Board, it is a GRT that's within the, that's passed within our counties. It doesn't cost us anything to be a member of the district, but it affords us opportunities to act, and possibly mitigation of some of the duplication of services that exist within our community, and the possibility of us actually saving money. We're trying to, they're trying to do an analysis currently on how we can work together. And again, it doesn't cost us anything to join, but it gives us a seat at the table.
Mr. Mayor, council, there is resolution 1447 attached, in which we are asking that by that resolution, you establish a public hearing. There's a very tight process by which the NCRTD would like us to conduct this, they will be present to provide information at that public hearing. And it's kind of an unusual process, and it appears that what they do is they actually, every time there's a new member to the district, dissolve the existing agreement and then reform it. So that's how we become members at the table. And I had also added, I believe, a second item in there, which would be the resolution you would actually consider at that public hearing, which would be requesting participation in the district, and appointing an elected official and an alternate to the board of directors. And then those individuals would be required to attend the NCRTD reorganizational meeting.
And just for information items, I do sit as the chair of that board, and I've sat for several years, and I think, you know, we've brought a number of new routes to the community. We have service all the way from Costilla down to Santa Fe, and we have a route that is kind of a trial basis that is going up to Sipapu, and then here shortly, there'll be a route to Tres Piedras that is on the trial basis. So again, it's, you know, moving people around within our community, hopefully, you know, shopping at our local grocery stores, bringing people into doctor's appointments and that type of stuff. And again, it doesn't cost anything to join, it's just that the collaboration, I think, would be great.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would like to thank you and the mayor pro tem for your participation in our earlier meeting with NCRTD, in, as was indicated in the earlier transportation grant dialogue, in our assuming responsibility for extending our existing service to provide service to both UNM campuses, which NCRTD provides a branch on now, in exchange for their assuming responsibility for our Friday and weekend service from Taos to Santa Fe, which is the greater expense. And we are also, at this time, have forwarded to them our full budget by route and expenses, which we anticipate very shortly, they will set up a follow-up meeting to see if there are any other routes that we can sort of have them pick up the expense of to free us up to do some other routes that we'll be coming back to you about. Or, and/or extending hours to assist those people that actually work later here in town.
There's also another avenue that the hospital is looking at, and they'll be doing a presentation to the hospital, I guess, is it called Advisory Board? I'm not sure what it's called.
Task Force.
Task Force, yeah. And they will be doing a presentation, because they were asking at the board that, you know, there's a lot of people within our community that cannot, you know, especially when they're trying to mitigate diabetes and other, I guess...
Chronic.
Chronic disease that are apparent in our community, that we can help mitigate by getting people to their appointments, and moving people around, and getting them to the training that they need to help with their own situation. And so they're going to be doing a presentation there, and seeing if there's, you know, some funding that they can acquire to help with that. So, Counselor Peralta, and then Counselor Gonzalez.
All right, I just, Mr. Mayor, for clarification, resolution 14-45, is that to be approved today?
No.
The reason I'm asking that is because it's got a date on it today.
Resolution 1447 is actually the resolution, proposed resolution is before you now, and that is just scheduling a date for consideration of 1445, which would be to form the district, and ordering staff to publish notice. The state statute requires that the hearing be held no sooner than 10 days after notice is published, advising the public of the notice. And so 1447 is setting October 2nd as the date that the resolution be considered, and ordering it to be published on September 18th, which would be the next addition to the council.
Okay, because the way that I have 1445, or 1445 is passed and approved on the 9th of September, which is today.
Oh, no, that comes up on October 2nd, and we'll fix that. 1447 is actually the one that, isn't it? Is the publication notice, and that is the one that should...
So that resolution has to take place before this one can be adopted?
No, this one has to take, 47 has to take place first, and the notice will be published, and then 45 will be considered on October 2nd.
Second or seventh?
Or seventh, whatever. Seventh, I'm sorry. Seventh.
Okay, so in other words, in order for us to approve 45, which is the resolution to join the North Central, can only be done after you have the public hearing under 45?
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure I got it straight. So how long, how long do you think that the public hearing would take place?
I believe they want to do about a 20-minute presentation to the elected officials in public.
So...
So, an hour at the most, I think.
So it would fall within our regular meeting, then?
Does the resolution say this?
Yes, that's the intention.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Mr. Mayor, I just had a question with regards to the resolution. And correct me if I'm wrong, does Lanal not fund the NCRTD via the state of New Mexico? Or where does funding from, in our, in NCRTD come from?
It is a grocery receipts tax, it was a aggregate vote, it comes from the municipalities of Santa Fe, Los Alamos, Rio Riba, and Taos Counties, and a stifin, or I guess you want to call it a stifin, from Lanal.
And, Mr. Mayor...
And that, and I guess it's not from Lanal, it's actually from Los Alamos County. And it has been...
Mr. Mayor, I believe that it's either Santa Fe or Santa Fe County actually gets money from Lanal, which then they contract for extra services between NCRTD and the county.
And, Mr. Mayor, that's one of the, and really the only reason I ask is that whoever, whichever member of this council sits on that board alongside yourself, to really hold Lanal to task, I know it's been pushed off, and they try to use these small little community programs as bits and pieces thrown at the communities to say, oh, look, we're... thrown at the communities to say, oh, look, we're helping. But, you know, when you look at the overall scheme of things, Lanal's a two-point-six-billion-dollar machine, and NCRTD, I don't know what your budget is, Mayor, but it can't be more than three, four-hundred thousand dollars a year.
It's actually a nine-million-dollar budget.
Is it a nine million?
Yeah.
Well, but supplemented alongside the state, you know, and I'm, I guess I look at it from the, from the perspective of Los Alamos National Labs, the, the animal and entity that they are within our commu, surrounding communities, that, you know, more subsidization, I think, while, while rural transit is a, is a good thing, but, you know, our schools are probably in one of the worst shapes, and, and they give eight million dollars per year to Los Alamos County schools. Whereas when you look at that in terms of what they give to Taos County schools, or Taos Public Schools, it's sixty backpacks. And so, you know, the offsets are completely skewed and out there. So, I, I just don't want it to be, you know, an, an acceptance of taking, you know, the minimal that Los Alamos National Labs feels that they should give to us, especially because of the fact that that money is our money. I mean, that's taxpayer-funded that, that goes out there, and I think it's extremely one-sided when Los Alamos County receives the benefit, and it, the argument can be made is that, well, they're in our, they're in our county. But then again, my argument to them is, well, it's not a Home Depot or a Lowe's that located there. It's the federal government, and, and those are our tax dollars. So, just, Mayor, whoever sits on that board alongside you, I just ask that you continue to push Los Alamos National Labs and Los Alamos County to contribute more than their fair share of, of what, you know, we as the municipalities, even outside of Santa Fe, Espanola, us, to, to really do, do some due justice with the, with the, with the programs that they fund.
And thank you, Counselor, for that, because, again, that's why I believe, that's why I wanted it on the agenda, so that we can have a seat at that table, because, you know, we're collecting money within Taos County, and, and this is money that we see, and we actually get more bang for the buck. We actually get more service than the amount that we collect. So, again, that's why I think it's important for the town of Taos to have a seat at that table and have some sort of direction on how that money gets spent. I know a big portion of it goes to fund the rail runner, and a portion of the Santa Fe GRT actually goes to fund the, I can't remember the name of the, the buses or the system over there right now. But, again, I think we get a seat at the table, and it really helps.
Probably Park and Ride?
Yeah, I believe, yes.
No, no, Park and Ride.
Not Park and Ride. I can, it's a city transit, transit, city transit system, so... Again, we have, what is the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just ask one question of you. Your position on, on the board is that as a county commissioner?
That presently is the county commissioner.
So you'll go off of that board automatically first of the year?
Uh, yes, or if I decide to step down before then.
No, but I'm just saying...
Yes.
That your normal term would be over at the first of the year?
Correct.
So, in a sense, we wouldn't have anybody at the table if we don't join that.
Correct. Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Mayor, councilmembers, I just want to clarify, that was for approval of resolution fourteen forty-seven.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So then we go to matters and reports from the council, Arts and Cultural District, the Main Street District. Councilmember Kuntu?
I believe that was going to be pulled today. They...
Yeah, unfortunately, we received that memo, the letter from Rena Rose Quest, the board president, too late to pull the item from the agenda, but they, they had been requested to attend at Councilwoman Kuntu's request to give a status report, and they subsequently sent a email communication that they have gone into a planning session in sort of a dormant mode and had a conversation with the state about that. And I'm presuming they're waiting to see the outcome of the report that I owe counsel, which should come up at the next meeting.
Well, at this point, with the, the new process of everybody applying... The new process of everybody applying and, and leveling the playing field for everybody is pretty satisfactory for me. It, it makes it a lot easier, sort of takes the politics out of it all, and it's refreshing, a new way to, to have people apply.
Counselor Peralta? Thank you, Counselor Kuntu.
Mr. Mayor, this is on a separate issue, subject. I just wanted to report on the hospital. We did receive, and I think it was in the paper, one point five, five-point-one million dollars from the state in regards to indigent care and meeting the matching requirements for Medicaid and Medicare, which has put about two-hundred thousand or so dollars into reserves at this time. There may be more on that depending upon how many clients we get through the doors over the, over the summertime and in the fall. Summer is the slowest time for us, and, but it'll be picking up now in September and through the fall months with flus and that sort of thing happening, so that'll increase. The other thing, and this is the reason I left the room to see Chris Tagg, was I wasn't able to attend the last board meeting, and so I was trying to get caught up with him on anything that might have taken place at the last board meeting that I needed to be aware of, because the next board meeting won't be till the twenty-fourth of this month. One thing he said is that the board has made a, a position that they are going to do more to communicate with the community, and I believe they've scheduled already a meeting with the county commissioners that Chris will, will present to the county commissioners next week. And then he says whenever we would like, he would, he'd be more than happy to come and make a presentation to us. And they are going to do much more, and this has been one of the arguments that I've had with them, is that we, they've been just too quiet in trying to tell people what's going on at the hospital. So, we're going to make a better effort on that. Secondly, they also have asked staff to move forward with the rural, what's it called? Rural Economic Financing leg of the federal government to look into the building of that office building that they want to put on the west, south, northwest corner of the property off Morgan Road, and, which would be medical offices and therapy units. So, they're looking at that to see what it would cost and what, whether or not it can be financed, and whether they can afford it. So that's one of the other things that they move forward on, and other than that, everything else is pretty routine reports.
Councilwoman Hunt, anything to report?
Well, just that, as a citizen, I attended the hospital's board meeting, Councilwoman Peralta, and as I, I've told you, I just plan on being there just because of my history and all of that, and interest. But I also go to the task force meetings the following week as a citizen, and the issue came up that the task force folks, remind me, Mayor, if I'm wrong about, I think they asked me to vote, and I just said, oh, I'm just here as a citizen, you know, and they said, well, there's supposed to be two counselors here. So we have the mayor, and are you, so what do you want to do, Mayor? Or what's the answer?
The answer, the answer is, it just came to me, is that there are supposed to be two members of the town, not necessarily counselors, but two members, and it used to be one council member and the manager that were on there. So, but, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be the manager, it can be anybody, so...
No, no, it's okay.
You know, we could, we could put our attorney on there, or the clerk, or, you know, it doesn't make any difference. So we don't want it to be a member of the voting part of the board, of the, of the council.
So, like, so what we need to do, and maybe Rick on one of our next meetings, is, is bring that back so that we can appoint somebody, a second person to that.
So you sit on it, Mr. Mayor?
I do. I currently, I was appointed to it.
And Councilman Peralta, what, what were you just saying? We don't want to have two?
No, 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 I said, you don't have to have two voting members of the town council on it.
It could be...
Just two members from the town to be on, on the commission.
Well, with my interest in the hospital, I'm, if, if the mayor and council feels it's appropriate, I'm happy to commit to the task force, and...
Thank you.
You're so welcome, and that'll cost you five bucks. So I can pay my parking fines.
Put it on the next agenda for appointment.
So, Counselor Gonzalez, you have anything you need to report?
No, Mayor, other than Councilmember Kuntu and myself will be headed to Dallas. I'll be there a little early because I sit on the educational fund board for the Policy Institute on Infrastructure hosted by Naleo in Dallas, Texas, which gives an overview of the changing dynamics of what's going on within small municipality infrastructure. It's part of their mile right before ten mile wrong initiative within aging population communities, where they're really trying to push the initiative of, of doing infrastructure right the first time. And I think it's, I'm, I'm happy that Counselor Kuntu accepted the invitation of Naleo to attend as well, of which none on the city dime, all paid out by private donors and, and sponsorship. So, again, good. Well, should have a report for you back when we get back sometime next week.
Councilmember Kuntu, anything to report?
Well, there was a board meeting for the TCEDC, and their student intern did a presentation on, on what her challenges were. It was, she's a wonderful student, and, and she reported on their food market that they're having every Monday now. And Tisa also moved in, helped somewhat with the finances, but not completely. So I really would encourage the town of Taos, as to me, that is the gem of Taos, and so many Taoseneos are coming out of there as entrepreneurs. For any support we can give them, they're so important of the TCEDC. The other one was from Fiesta Council, which I was appointed on, which I went to the Santa Fe fiestas with them over the weekend, and it was, I hadn't been there since I was fourteen, and it was so impressive. And it just had my mind spinning because there's so much community participation there, and such a warm feeling, and it's not really the feeling I get here. And, and, you know, there's a huge participation in their parade and in their booths. They're, they're just so different. So, I have a lot of ideas to possibly help with some of the complaints that I hear from Taoseneos.
And Counselor Kuntu, I agree with you on that. I hope we, we can get, you know, we have a lot of organizations within our own community that continue to want to raise money, and those booths on the plaza, you know, it's great to see local people running booths within our own plaza. It's welcoming because you see familiar faces. You don't see all, all the, I want to say...
Knickknacks.
Yeah, knickknacks, and, and, and hopefully, we can get more of our, even our young athletes, our young organizations to, to help out and, and to realize that it's an opportunity for them to raise money for their organization.
It really would, and I had a, a long conversation with Manuel and Teresa Medina, and, you know, got their input onto how they, they got to be where they are and why it is the way it is. And, and just, I really saw, you know, a lot of ways in, in helping them out to, to bring new people in and make some changes, and, and, you know, satisfy the Taoseneos who, who complain. And also with the parade as well, I, their parade was incredible. And completely participated in by museums and banks and, and the community members, businesses, and the school participation was just incredible. Santa Fe High, they had the football team, they had the band in uniform, they had the cheerleaders, the pom-pom girls, they had classes, like the engineering class, how to float, and some other different classes. And it was, it was really refreshing to see such happy, positive, community input and participation.
And Counselor, do they have cash award prizes for the...
No, that I don't know.
Yeah.
That I don't know.
I think they do, and I think we want to, yeah, I think we want to try to do something like that because I know a lot of those, you know, I think it's, it helps.
Because it is. It's a, it's a, it's a cultura thing, you know, and, and everybody needs to participate, you know. I mean, if we backed out of the, the Taos fiestas, the community would be really, really upset and angry because it's part of our culture for decades, and, you know, other, other communities are doing it, and we need to be part of our own community, as we're all, you know, when we're away from being counselors, we're part of the community.
Yes, ma'am.
Or mayor.
Counselor Hunt?
Councilwoman, remind me, you were, you were talking to me the other day about two people you really wanted to thank and acknowledge for something they had done. I want to say...
Oh, it was, yes, it was, it was Rick, and it was Cindy Pettis, well, through Rick and, and Chief Weaver. Those reports that you gave us, like on the meters for August, that was so appreciated and so past due, and it was really refreshing to get a figure right in front of our face. And Cindy Pettis, I imagine through your direction, well, Mayor Rick, that all the contracts that went through, thank you for reminding me, Counselor Hunt. And I think, you know, being informed like that is, is a must, and thank you.
And Counselor, you know, early on, we had, a couple of, three, four weeks ago, you know, that was kind of the direction of the council, you know, that we wanted more involvement or more, I want to say, let you know what's happening type thing. And so that's the way and direction that we're moving, so thank you for that.
It's all good.
Mr. Mayor, I also wanted to let us know that we received a forty-thousand-dollar tourism grant from State Tourism.
Forty thousand, yes, thank you.
Forty.
No, fourteen.
Forty.
Forty.
Oh, yeah.
At four hundred, forty.
I wanted to find out where we are in the process of, of making committees as far as events or...
For the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board?
Yeah.
Yeah, I will turn over the names at the next meeting of the Lodger's Tax Board, but unfortunately, we haven't gotten very much feedback, probably three or four people.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll try publicizing that again, and we were trying to set something up for the mayor to get back on the radio stations to talk about our need for people to participate on committees and whatever openings there are.
How many people do you think we'll need on that committee?
Minimum of five, but we'd like seven or nine.
Yeah, I, I think that there are a lot of people that expressed interest early, and we're just going to have to go rope them in, talk to them one-on-one.
Anything else from the council? Not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move, Mr. Mayor.
We have a second?
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.